Withdraw from the services of True North. Upon meeting with that group a couple of times, we were able to have a pretty honest conversation about how many districts actually intended to put in their intent to withdraw before June 30th of this year. The reason June 30th is a date is that it states in the bylaws that anything after June 30th means that you're in for the next year, the next fiscal year. And when it came to light that an overwhelming majority of the 18 districts were planning on putting their intent, those of us who were left realized that we would be in a really precarious situation being left as only a few member districts in the event that those districts actually pulled out. And so in this last month before July, all it is my understanding that all 18 districts will put in their intent to withdraw from True North by June 30th. Some of them because they actually intend to do so and have been working on it. And some of them like us who are intending to do this to protect our own assets and our own rights with regard to any kind of dissolution process that we are made out of. So again, tonight, we're going to be looking at putting in a resolution for the intent to withdraw in two years. That's according to the bylaws as they're written now. There are some proposals on the table to amend the bylaws in some ways, but as the bylaws stand right now, it's a two-year process and we would be going by those bylaws. So if the board votes to approve that resolution tonight, we would continue engaging in the steps that we've already started taking towards the future. One is engaging with our other member districts, so in either small groups or in maybe a redesigned smaller True North Cooperative. Many of us intend to continue to cooperate with other districts to provide services that we cannot provide in our own district. So Tracy has already reached out to Lake Forest in particular, but we've also talked to other districts that would like to cooperate. We're just not really sure how that might look yet, but we have taken the initial steps and we're really grateful to our partners in our neighboring districts for thinking through how we might be able to cooperate and either share staff or provide classrooms, something along those lines to provide the services that True North provides that we do not and helps. We will continue to engage with True North. Next year, services plan to continue. There is still a leadership council. There is still a body there and many, many staff. And we would like to continue to be active participants at the leadership council level. Laura is our representative there and at the director and superintendent levels to keep engaging on how this can look in the future. With 18 districts, there's lots of moving parts here. This is involving by the day. And then, of course, to continue to engage with our staff and our families to make sure that we're making the best decisions that we can as things come up. Tracy has sent communications to some of our, all of our families, then engaged with True North. We've been in closer contact with those who maybe are in a True North facility. But what we're going to be trying to do is evaluate kind of specific circumstances and determine what we need to do to keep services going at the highest level for all of our students. True North, like I said, as a cooperative, plans to be intact and serving students and families for the 25, 26 school year. This is with for our part, this was not the road we wanted to go down. As you know, like we said, as you know, you voted twice no for these districts to leave, and that's because we wanted the cooperative to stay intact for our families and community. And at this point, this resolution is simply to make sure that we're protected in the event of a dissolution. So tonight's resolution outlines a few different things. It outlines the success that we've seen as a result of our inclusive practices work alongside of True North staff. We are leading the cooperative and the number of students who are engaged with their grade level peers more than 80% of their school day. We've done a lot of coaching with True North. We've done a lot of work with them over the last few years to make sure that this is the case for all of our students. It does indicate the cost associated with being a member of the cooperative regardless of our engagement. So as you know, there are also member and operations and maintenance fees that go along and professional development fees that go along with being a member regardless of if we use them or not. So many districts are experiencing low usage on a student level, but also still have high costs. It indicates that withdraw at this time is the best interest of our students and staff in order to protect our own district interests in the midst of a potential dissolution or redesign. Like I said, there's a couple of different ways that this could go and we'd like to continue engaging with other partner districts as well as True North. It indicates that we'll continue to work with our staff and community to make the best decisions for our district throughout this process. And then it outlines some of the next steps in the withdrawal process as they stand now before any bylaws are revised based on some current proposals. That means the evaluation. So as part of the withdrawal process, a district according to the bylaws now would begin engaging in an audit of their own student services and special education. Services that they provide to their students. Right now, there is a proposal on the table to amend the bylaws so that none of the districts would engage with that kind of an audit simply because with everybody intending to leave, none of the member districts feel like that's a good use of money, given that we will probably need to hire some additional staff to help with the reorganization or dissolution. Any questions?
Thank you. This has been a lot of work. I do have a question, just sort of a clarifying question, because I know it seems contradictory that we have twice voted to not let other districts out of the co-op and now we are putting in a position to withdraw as well. Can you talk a little bit about the way it was set up, what the financial impact would be on us, have you voted yes or for?
Yeah, so historically speaking, other times in its history, districts have tried to leave the cooperative and because of taking the financial or the financial investment from one district and redistributing it to the rest of the member districts, that those financial implications are pretty big. So we are a small district. We would take a proportional expense, but as you know, we already spent a good deal of money to be a member of True North. And with bigger districts leaving, they obviously have a bigger piece of the pie that they are already paying for. So when those bigger districts leave, that expense gets redistributed among fewer districts. And so our contribution goes up towards facilities, operations and maintenance, professional development staff and overhead, all of those kinds of aspects of what we're doing, what we pay for that membership. And with unfortunately, True North not having been able to figure out a way for new districts to come in and offset that cost, it's just unsustainable for us as the remaining 16 districts to take on all those pieces that these other two districts would have left us with. And then in addition to that, knowing that every other district was planning on putting in their intent for whatever reason, whether it's because they actually want to go or because they're also afraid of incurring those extra expenses, we just couldn't be left standing as one of only one or two districts left to kind of deal with all those expenses.
And so we reached all the families that we reached out to that are currently using True North and you've gotten positive response or therefore an understanding of what's going on for them?
I can't tell you. I think each individual situation is different. What I can tell you is that the communication is that we're here to support and that we will make sure there's a continuity of service.
And we're still identifying our new families that can continue in our processes.
Yes, yes. And so some of our families who are the students engaged with True North services in school will really have more of like a seamless transition as we hire staff, you know, to do those kinds of things. Many of our students though that work with True North staff outside of the school would have a different experience. And then obviously moving forward, if we were to have new students come into the district who needed True North services, we would not be looking as a first placement to go to True North given that we're in kind of a volatile time right now. We'd be looking for other places.
Any other questions?
Just to confirm, if we were one of the less, one or two districts, what we would take on all the financial responsibilities plus would be staff as well? Would that be?
So there would still be a two-year process, at least we think. There's different interpretations of school code. One of the 18 districts is arguing that they would leave in one year when the bylaws state two and everyone else is pretty much in agreement that we would take a two-year off ramp. So there would be this time period where there would be stability, but districts would be kind of haphazardly going through this process. It's kind of unknown what would happen because as a district decides to withdraw, there's a calculation and a formula that's applied with the money that they would have to pay back to the cooperative for being in it and for leaving it. So there's really no way to calculate out exactly what would happen with a certain number of districts leaving in a certain timeframe and then trying to make up for that and then looking at students that we have two or three days ahead. It's just, it would be very I'm not sure. I'm not sure exactly what that would look like because in two years, all of our student populations could look very different. We could have staff at True North who decide to leave because of the situation and we could wind up, you know, having to hire people or not being able to hire people because we're in this scenario. So the whole thing is fairly confusing and situation's very difficult.
But it sounds like all the districts, all the 18 are trying to work together.
I would say most are. Yeah, most are trying and I'm just really grateful that we're here because even though we're a small district, Lake Bluff has been kind of disproportionately involved in the leadership in True North. So Mark Berry, then if you remember, was on the leadership council for years. I think over eight years he was on the leadership council. Jay has been a member of the finance committee for at least the same number of years. I've been involved in the leadership council. So we've had a really good presence and so I think that we have influence in how things might be able to be determined and I do think all of us want what's best for all of the kids in the 18 districts. And so that's the balance, right? We want to do right by all of the kids. We want to specifically do right by our students.
Such an unfortunate situation. Any other questions?
Just when you said the two years, that would be after the 26, 27 school year.
Hopefully. There are some superintendents recommending a three-year off ramp. We should give us a little bit more time. I don't know exactly, but that would look like it. And the leadership council has not really explored that option.
Thank you. I will move on to public comments. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a public comment about the withdrawal?
I'll say that so I'm sorry to interrupt, but yeah, my son Peter, who's a True North, I mean, they've been incredibly instrumental in getting him to just go to school. And so this is so disappointing to hear that they can't continue. So of course I've worried about how these individuals continue to, you know, look out on your school. After the one to three years. It's just, is there any, so it sounds like the question was already asked, but districts are working together. Has there been like communication across to just like where everybody was understanding each other's positions? Or is it kind of more independent?
We're trying.
Yeah.
I think everyone's in a really tough position. The one thing I think we can assure is that as we know information, we will certainly be pushing information out to our parents. And we are still committed to our inclusive practices. We're committed to all of our students and families. We will work to make sure that we are providing as good of an educational experience and environment as we possibly can, especially for our students that are more significantly impacted. I mean, this is where it's a really, really difficult scenario because these are the students in our area who need the most support and and the staff who have been so instrumental in their success. And so it has been really difficult to have this conversation. And really, this is what it comes down to is our families that have been able to be with us. And in a good way, we've learned a lot and so we feel like we can move ahead and we'll work hard to make sure we do that.
I meant the letter too, because they've just been, I mean, my son loves school and it's just really, I mean, it's just a priceless quality of life tremendously. And it's just very impactful for us.
Yeah, I have up here a letter that I'd like to send along with our intent to withdraw because I I do not want the staff at True North to feel as though we are bailing on them in any way other than that we need to in order to kind of put ourselves in the same position as every other district, but I don't want that to come without gratitude and compassion for the situation that they're in and a commitment to continue to working on the way that we've worked with them if we can. So it's going to be difficult. It's going to be challenging, but we may experience some opportunities from this. That would be good and that's what we'll be looking for. And those good opportunities to continue to support students right here in our district, right alongside their peers and their neighbors and facilitating those relationships and that student achievement and growth in our districts.
And just to clarify, leaving True North is not something that we wanted to do. It is something that we feel that we must do as it is crumbling around us and the way the bylaws state, any district who is left has to pay for every other district. So we cannot take on the fiscal responsibility of 18 districts. We just don't have the budget to do so. So we're certainly still committed to finding the best solutions for all of our families that we can. But we have to withdraw because.
Or leave, put in the info.
Yes, thank you.
And it seems, and to clarify, if in three months we come out with a great plan, we can withdraw our intent to withdraw. This doesn't mean that this is the end. We can actually pull back and anyone can. So I'm hopeful. I'm involved in a lot of conversations on a lot of different levels right now and you know, we have a strong sense of partnership on the North Shore and these are really great, high-performing districts that are invested in student achievement and growth. We remain confident that we can come to a good solution here for all.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have anything else they want to add?
Let's see, we haven't figured out Peter. I'm going to make sure he can say amazing education.
All right. May I have a motion to adjourn the June 24, 2025 North Cooperative Withdrawal Hearing Meeting at 7:07 PM. So moved.
Sorry.
All in favor? Can you impose?
Yes.
And we are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to go into our third meeting now. Welcome to the Lake Bluff School District 65 Board of Education Meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order at 7:07 PM. Lauren, may I have a roll call?
Sure, or breakstone.
Here, please sign up.
Yeah.
Lauren from Shear and.
I'm here.
Andrew Carlson.
Here.
Richard Driver.
Here.
Tim Punch.
Here.
Oh, sorry. We are all here. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance to Thank you. Do they even like to volunteer to read our mission, vision and motto tonight? Thank you, Carrie.
Our mission is ensuring academic achievement and personal growth for all students through innovative and engaging educational opportunities. Our vision is an inclusive community motivated by and inspired to change the world through exploration and collaboration. And our motto is excellence in education enthusiasm for life, every student, every day.
Thank you very much. At this point in the meeting, we do welcome public comments from anyone in the audience. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment? We do also have an opportunity at the end of the meeting if you decide. All right, not seeing any, we will move on to our reports for the evening. I believe we do not have a PTO report or alliance report tonight. My president's report is very brief. I just want to remind everybody on the Board of Education that if you do have any agenda items you would like added in the future, can always reach out to me or to Dr. Leal. We can work to get those on future agendas. Timing really depends on the urgency of the issue and what. So skip recognition the next time. That's all I have to say. Superintendent report. Nothing tonight. Okay. Then let's move on to our discussions and presentations. The first one. Oh, yes. Okay, is our BOE presentations for 2025, 26. So discussing what presentations we would like to see in the toward themes for the following school year. Did anyone have any suggestions or ideas of things that they would like to make sure get added to the agenda throughout the school year next year? Presentations specifically that we would like to see.
I love the updates from LVES and then LVMAs specific to each school, just like a principal's report was happening like mid-year. I thought it was fun with our videos last year as well. I think if that would have been.
I, I'm with some new curriculum and other initiatives that have been approved this year. I thought it might be helpful to get updates on those, assuming it's not too time consuming to do. With the, for instance, the expansion of enrichment program, the various math changes that are being made at the middle school, the third grade ELA pilot, if that's goes forward as well as how the continued rollout of iPads in the classrooms are working. Just as examples, and then also depending on what happens with True North, I think it would be helpful to have a update at some point, their presentation about what our plan might be as, as that becomes more true.
Great suggestions, Tim. Thank you. I was going to say, I don't know if it's easier for me to do it like halfway through the year or at the end of the trimester, but an update on the math rollout and how it's going because it's a different program next year. Encouraging. But different, there's new math.
The two math classes.
Or the math applications.
Correct.
And then, and then also the ELA.
The ELA classes.
There's nothing necessarily else. There's like, but in the past, we had students and teachers at meetings and we seemed like we got away from that class. You're so, it might be an inconvenience for students and teachers to come, but it's always nice to know when, when something good is there.
That's a good point. I think that we need to at some point have a discussion about how we want to do recognition of teachers and students. Because I agree, we want to know the nice things that are going on. We want them to be recognized. But it also sort of feels like a burden or a lot to ask families to come to the school board meetings and saying to the teachers. So maybe we could add a future agenda item, have a discussion with the board of how we want to see recognition. Anything else? It might be, sorry. Jay did, remember when we did the Jeopardy, which I appreciated so much, even though I lost.
Terrific.
But because I appreciated it and I learned so much, if we could have like just maybe once at some point during a board meeting, just like a five-minute slide just that has sort of definitions of all these very fancy terms that Jay uses because I sometimes forget.
I just invented the Jay encyclopedia.
Yes, and again, like a smiley face. Just to gauge the. Yeah, just like, yeah. Like a short slide, one slide.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
And a couple of things, and I think they've somewhat been covered, but I'll just, I'll throw them out there and add them together. But one was just a focus on, especially on K through three, because I know we're looking at those and just as often as possible, we could update on how that academic progress is going with math and reading. And especially, you know, I mean, I I love input from teachers if we can get that directly or indirectly because they're frontline and they kind, I mean, pretty soon they know who's struggling and who's not and what's working, what's not. And also we've got these new doors locks going in that, you know, we spent $380,000 for. But they're no better than what we had if the doors aren't closed. So I would like to see that.
You mean the like the doors to the classrooms?
Yeah.
Yeah. Teachers closing their.
Yeah, I'd like to see that the the principals, assistant principals just report on, you know, periodically checking and feedback as to our, you know, business safety because I mean, that's the one thing that kind of keeps us all up at night.
I'm going to build on that a little bit is maybe another presentation from Austin at some point on our safety and security updates and.
No, I think he never often reports. I'd like to hear his, you know, you know, talk about compliance with, you know, with that absolute necessity. I mean, without that, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't achieve what we're trying to achieve. I'd also just like to get periodic updates in advance of the presentation tonight from, from on behavior, just, just some way to monitor how that's, if that's improving.
Oh, like a midway check-in.
Just, you know, here's the process we're going through and here's, here's the results we have been experiencing. Here's the new results and you know, they did altogether some, they have some great numbers and it just, something along that line that we can monitor and, you know, see if we're making it private or something.
Just for everything else.
For just for everyone's benefit, that's the number of office referrals and the number of students that have had those office referrals. So yeah, percentage of students basically being referred to the office.
Well, and the frequency, the frequency almost is a bit more important almost than the, than the numbers.
The number of students repeatedly going.
And repeatedly going in.
Agreed, but that was, it's still my thunder.
I was already.
It's okay.
Anything else that's on anyone else's mind? Well, if you think of additional items or have any questions on these items, reach out to Lisa or myself and you can add those in as well.
And Carrie and Ann and I will sit together and plan these out throughout the year strategically so that the we don't overload one, two meetings.
It's like midyear.
December's going to be real long.
Yeah, I was just kidding.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, guys. Uh, next up, we have a presentation on student behavior and discipline with Kelly Bailey Needleworth. Do you guys want to maybe hit the lights up there? You have two moments.
Pardon me, I should have connected. So good evening, everyone. Happy June. Happy to be here. This is the kind of kick off and launch of this. I'll acknowledge that if you were here in February of 2023, you may recall a few of these slides. A couple of them are repeats. We brought them back just as a reminder, but then of course added new information and updated the presentation. Just as a quick roadmap for what we're going to be covering tonight, just a quick review. Just as a quick roadmap for what we're going to be covering tonight, uh, just a quick review of Senate Bill 100, what that is. Student behavior support systems, provide that overview, uh, talk a little bit about what the foundations framework is and how that contributes to our work. We'll also talk about ruler and then get into responses to behaviors when they occur. Talk to you a little bit about how we define those behaviors, how they are grouped into different levels, and then the responses to those different levels. So here we go. Senate Bill 100, it was actually an effort that began back in 2012, uh, the goal being to try to, uh, identify and reduce the amount of students who are being excluded from school as a result of behavioral issues. Specifically, students of color, uh, students with disabilities, L B T Q, E L L learners. That was one of the primary concerns of this group that began the work. Uh, ultimately, it ended up being adopted in the law in September, uh, 2016. Uh, Senate Bill 100 brought some changes to the ways in which schools can respond to behaviors. Uh, one of those things is that without defining, uh, what zero tolerance policies mean necessarily, they were expressly prohibited. In other words, school districts can no longer have just a zero tolerance blanket policy in response to any specific behavior. Um, reasonable efforts must be made to resolve threats, uh, address disruptions and minimize the length of time that students are excluded from class. So that's something that Senate Bill 100 mandated. Also, uh, student discipline policies should include interventions, uh, that the school district intends to, uh, implement uh, as part of its disciplinary process. That's part of what Kelly and I will be presenting to you tonight. Non exclusionary forms of discipline and lesser interventions, uh, are disciplinary measures that do not result in students being removed from the school environment. So there really was a big emphasis here about, uh, kind of to what extent schools can suspend, expel, remove from the classroom for extended periods of time. Let's talk a little bit about behavior. Um, so we know that behavior is communication. Everything that we do or don't do is behavior. Um, behavior is learned. Behavior can also be changed. Punishment does not teach behavior, and that's something that, um, we have kind of continued to learn and be reinforced with as we've gone through our foundations training. And so wanted to just kind of put that out there, some of our guiding principles as we put this, uh, presentation together, as we put our response to behaviors together, uh, in the form of procedures and policies in the district.
All right. So the things that we know in the previous slide, we've learned through research and a lot of the professional development that the district has been focused on for 10 plus years. So I'm going to elaborate a little bit on the foundation's framework and ruler. Uh, these are two really important, um, guiding pieces as we think about navigating student behavior throughout the district. Um, so when we think about foundations, um, as you can see, the past 10 years, we've had multiple cohorts of staff from L B E S and L B M S be trained. So it's a, it's a year long commitment. There's multiple sessions. We're usually partnering with other school districts and it's led by the professionals from state and municipal schools. Um, there's really a strong focus through this work on student behavior and discipline, school climate and safety, and a big emphasis on staff collaboration and consistency. And so this learning is something that we introduce to new staff as they come in. We're reminded of it throughout the year, um, with teams that we have at both of our buildings. So this work really is not just a committee meeting and kind of going and present on it. There's we're grounded in classroom expectations. So, um, you know, rules and expectations are set from the beginning. Routines are emphasized, um, teams are working together to talk about how to support students with behavior in and out of the classroom. Um, and then another big post is just the school wide expectation. So common area expectations, meaning we all know what's expected in the lunchroom. So we can teach students that with consistency. There's strong emphasis on being preventative, considering a positive and proactive approaches. And so this foundations work is really important. It's, um, really, it's led at L B E S, um, through our PEP committee that Kathleen Turner Clark leads, and I know Joe, you and me, or Joe and me lead it at the middle school. Um, some examples of signage, just to get a bit of a visual, um, these are posters or signs that you'll see throughout, um, L B E S. Again, emphasizing pause that those are real core values that we have at the elementary school, making sure that we're teaching this at the very beginning of the year. Reminding students, we're reteaching it, we're pulling small groups, um, we're meeting individually with students. Um, and then the posters are really important because it provides a visual. So we can easily reference maybe non verbally. Um, and it helps as we're moving throughout the building to make sure that we're consistent and all on the same page. These are some examples, um, from late middle school. Do you like the back in one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I love the way.
I know.
I get that we do, I guess.
Maybe we teach, we do a little. I don't want to suggest that they weren't taught that at some point, but yes, we do. We reteach behavior is as much a part of, and we'll talk about that. Things that we teach here, uh, is science of size, people language, it's all matter.
And we are doing some work this summer to align our posters a little bit so that they're visually looking very similar so that there's a seamless transition from elementary to middle because we're so much of the same language is being used, um, specific to kind of their developmental needs. The second component that I want to make sure to talk about is the ruler approach. Um, both schools are embarking on using this approach to help staff and students develop emotional intelligence skills. Um, so the acronym ruler, as you can see, stands for recognizing emotions in self and others, understanding the cause and consequence of emotions, labeling emotions accurately, expressing emotions appropriately, and regulating emotions effectively. So these are core skills that will improve focus. They'll reduce conflict and they create a more supportive school climate. So we think it's important to reference kind of the social emotional layer because we know that social emotional learning feeds into the instruction that we provide surrounding behavior. Uh, we also believe that by embedding ruler in our classrooms, we're giving students tools to manage their emotions, to make responsible decisions and to build stronger connections, not only with one another, but with the staff throughout our schools.
Okay, we'll talk about, uh, some of those misbehaviors and how we respond when they do occur. Um, first of all, our goal is for all students to be in class and highly engaged. And that's one of the best ways to prevent that misbehavior in the first place is highly engaged students. However, inappropriate behavior does happen. Um, and so then how do we respond to that? Uh, in addition to taking, as I mentioned already, teaching academic classes, you have to recognize and understand particularly in K eight, we're still teaching behaviors, we're still reinforcing expectations. Uh, and as a staff, that's very much something that I know in the elementary building as well as middle school, uh, is well understood and appreciated. We're doing all of those things. We're not just subject area specialists. Um, we want students to learn from mistakes uh, and the missteps, and we also want for parents to be very much involved in partnering with us. We'll be communicating our observations. We'll be communicating next steps with families. And truly one of the most important elements to responding to behavior is that partnership that exists between school and parents. Uh, when it happens, uh, those are the things that really have a meaningful impact and we can, uh, move forward together. Uh, and and help our students learn from their mistakes. Uh, because both L B E S and L B M S, uh, have reviewed different types of behaviors and approaches and responses. And we're going to talk a little bit more about what those behaviors look like. Mentioned levels already. Uh, we're going to talk about three different levels of behavior. Uh, level one behaviors are those that are the minor misbehaviors that occur in classroom setting. Those are the behaviors that uh, teachers or a supervisor are going to be responding to. Um, they're the kinds of things that happen frequently, regularly, the redirect, the hey, can I move in this direction? Can I do this differently? It's, it's something that, uh, really is embedded into the art of teaching, right? You're still delivering good instruction, but also monitoring behavior and engaging on behaviors when they need to be. Uh, we'll talk about samples of those types of behaviors, but when we also talk about these levels, I want you to understand that at, at the middle school in particular, uh, the teacher will address those behaviors. And, uh, very often, if they're noticing that they're reoccurring frequently, uh, we have a method by which that teacher can, uh, record it in a log that the rest of the team has access to. Um, in part because if we're finding that those behaviors are reoccurring, not just in one classroom, but throughout the school day, we have some evidence to suggest that that's happening. And that can be a trigger into a level two. We'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, but, uh, at elementary, because of the self-contained setting, uh, it's one of those things that teachers just respond to, apply and move on. They're with their kids all day long. Um, and frankly, uh, wanting to also not overburden teachers with the documentation piece of things, with the understanding that some of these level behaviors are to be expanded.
I think the only other thing I would note is these levels came out of the work of foundations. And so that initial sort of rollout and professional development was through their guidance to help us to be sure to define your behaviors. So teachers know the expectation and they can be consistent throughout settings. And so we have documents that teachers can reference, like is this a level one, two, or three? We know that there's some flexibility, um, but making sure that we're all on the same page and since our transition to the five degrees level, we have far less students sort of showing up in the office because teachers understand that it is the expectation that they navigate these behaviors within their classroom. They can certainly come later and be like, this happened, here's how I handled it. What do you think? And we could be there to problem solve and coach along with others kind of leaders throughout the building, but that background is important.
Perhaps you wonder, what do level one behaviors look like? We don't read them all, but, um, we have some samples and some examples, right? Uh, swearing not directed at an individual, uh, classroom expectations or rule infractions, impolite disrespectful behavior and inappropriate language. Um, kind of a laundry list of things that have can occur, but would be considered level one, would require a response or a reaction. Um, but not necessarily being sent to the office or, or not even necessarily resulting in a call home, email home. Um, but here's also some of those responses. Um, nonverbal aggression. Uh, we'll sometimes see teachers just very, you know, split little, hey, oh, thank you. He gets back on track. A nonverbal redirect as they're in the midst of teaching or instructing. Uh, a gentle verbal reminder, uh, of positive behavior, you know, this is what we're looking for at this time, that.
And like, oh, everyone's keeping their hands to themselves.
The way of keeping your hands to yourself. Um, proximity, uh, sometimes just that movement through the room and getting a little closer to that student who may be needing to get back on track, that proximity and realizing, oh, yeah, okay, got it. Thank you, teacher. I'm with you. Um, sometimes it's a private discussion. Uh, at the middle school, that's something that's seen frequently where I might be, hey, I can't talk about that right now, but I'm going to talk to you about that in a few minutes. Vacation and then continue on. And sometimes even that redirect is about to get the student back on track. And then it's opportunity to just process it afterwards when there's a moment in the lesson to do it. Um, it could be seat change. Uh, it could be something like, hey, you know, you've really taken a lot of time and energy, uh, out of this particular class today. I feel like we need to kind of recoup some of that. So maybe it's time load. Uh, during a different point in the day, whether it could be lunch, it could be at our recess time. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about recess K five and how that Senate Bill 100 feeds into that. Uh, come back to that in a minute. Uh, loss of privileges and of course family contact. So those are all things teachers would take the initiative of. Um, so, so one of those things that Senate Bill 100 also did was to restrict, uh, recess as a, as a privilege to be taken away at fifty eight K five. Uh, so we wanted to mention that. Um, and then I said earlier, level one behaviors do not necessarily get communicated to families in part because that's part of the teaching. We're just addressing those things as they happen and moving forward. Uh, students respond to that. We're in good shape. Uh, level two behaviors have a different, have a different flavors. So we'll talk about that. Um, with level two behaviors, uh, they're more disruptive, more impactful to instruction, uh, or the classroom environment. Or they could be those persistent reoccurring level ones, right? This is a student who is just kind of struggling to pick up on the redirect or the every day is coming in with that same behavior and it's just continuing to be problematic. And so we can elevate that to a level two as a result. Um, you want to talk a little bit about?
Yep, at L B E S, then the teacher would complete what we call a level two tracking form. It's a Google form that indicates sort of where the behavior happened, how they would categorize it. Um, there's a spot to sort of elaborate on some details of, you know, maybe what happened before, who else was involved. Um, and then they can also indicate teacher was like teacher handled the problem in the moment or would like some follow up from an administrator. And so typically then the teacher would communicate with the parent via phone call or email home that this sort of behavior occurs that we can keep again, families in partnership. If an administrator is asked to sort of join in, we might make that, that call or initiate some of that conversation just depending case by case. Um, and then in this instance, um, again, the teacher might request a follow up with an admin. It might be to meet with the student. It might be to talk with the teacher about it and kind of create a plan moving forward.
At the middle school, we have a communications document, uh, electronic, uh, opportunity for a teacher to not only, uh, collect the data of what's happening, but communicate it to families. Um, I'll acknowledge that that was kind of a, a shift in language when we rolled this out at the beginning of last year, uh, we called it a behavior doc. And, and it was interesting to see how when a parent, I should, I should back up. When one of those submissions goes into our communications doc, um, the parent gets a copy of it, the student gets a copy of it, the advisor gets a copy of it. Uh, myself and Mr. Jack, he get a copy of it. If they happen to be a student who's supported by, uh, one of our student services team members, social worker, psychologist, uh, the teacher goes to check that box and those folks would also be responsible for processing some of these things with kids, would also get a copy of it. So the communication goes out. We've coached all of our teachers on kind of how to really make sure that that's quality factual information that can be easily understood for the recipients who are receiving it. Um, I think the shift away from calling it a behavior doc and a shift towards communication was really again to try and there was just some, there was feedback from parents that they didn't necessarily love this idea. And there was this feeling of my kid's in trouble and, and I'm, and I'm upset and defensive. And so we felt like we needed to shift it a little bit, not soften it, but shift it and, and really focus on what it was intended to be, which is communication home, not necessarily consequence associated with this. Uh, it may be that a parent at home decides, hey, look, this, no, like, we're going to do something at home. That's okay. That's fine. Uh, but not necessarily a, a school related consequence, other than to say this is something we want to address. Now, um, being that Joe and I get these things, um, if there's a frequency that we're noticing, it wouldn't be uncommon for us to go ahead and and unilaterally check in with that student, get a better understanding of what happened and why it's happening in multiple classes and have a separate follow up. But that's not necessarily a hard and fast for the level twos. Maybe you're wondering what level two behaviors might look like. Um, in this case, we're talking about things that are again, just simply more disruptive, right? Uh, verbal implications, loud voices escalating above, uh, disagreement, uh, the kind of interactions that require, uh, an adult to intervene, uh, put downs, uh, without an audience or teasing, that kind of thing. Uh, students walking out of class without permission, um, throwing objects, hiding other people's things, uh, non compliance. Put spinning on there, not directed at a person. Um, if it were directed at a person, it moved to level three. That's why we did that. Um, but you get a, you get an idea here of some of those behaviors. In this case, uh, we're talking about, um, behaviors, as I mentioned, repeated, uh, uh, level one could get us here, um, parent contact that is required when you've got level twos. That's one of the things that we want to make sure we do is inform parents about that. Um, seems like this is something you need a little reteaching on. This is a behavior that you're struggling with. So we're going to be looking at ways in which to teach the student to perform in a different way, to behave in a different way that's acceptable for the classroom setting, hallway setting, wherever the behavior is happening. Um, sometimes we're, we're leaning into a behavior contract, like, okay, this is happening again and again. We've identified where and we've identified some of those triggers and let's pull together a behavior plan. Um, a sample of that would be in the middle school, uh, as they're getting into sixth and seventh grade, uh, helping to have them to be more reflective of their own behavior. Sometimes that behavior plan is a, a rating scale that the student provides for their own performance in a classroom setting compared with the rating scale for that same time and space that a teacher provides. And at the end of the week, we're looking at how those ratings align and having a teachable moment around that. If they're lining up, great. Well, at least we're having a realistic perspective on what's happening. But if they're still not where they need to be, what do we need to do to get there? Um, plan discussion, the data collection. This is very much a part of level two. Like when, when we, I heard you speaking earlier, I'm, I'll have it for you. I'll be ready to present updates on how this is going because we have it at our fingertips with a lot of these, uh, uh, collection tool, data collection tools that we have. Um, some of those consequences that L B E S, L B M S rather, you know, we do have kids that'll be in for recess sometimes at lunch with us. Um, we have other, uh, more, at middle school, more extracurricular opportunities, more, um, privileges that students get to be a part of. Those can sometimes become things that are removed for a student. Uh, particularly when we look at athletics, there's a vote of conduct as it relates to athletics, a behavior that is expected during the school day. Those things could be, uh, removed, field trips and those sorts of things we can get to. Uh, and, and of course temporary removal from class. And I know we provided some information earlier about, uh, office referrals. I do want to be clear that there are a variety of reasons when students would land in the office and it's not always that they've acted out and landed there as a result. Um, so when you ask for that data, I want to be clear that that data was specific to students who were referred to the office for behavior. And our goal of course is to get them back to class and help them to be engaged and productive in learning. So, um, that's behavior two or a level two. Um, and here we go, uh, level threes, and these are far less common. I want to just lean. I want to just lean into that right up front and say, these are far less common. Because when I flip to the what are big behaviors, well, you must use some scary. So behaviors that require office referral, these are the things that happen, we got to get on that right away. It's not something that a teacher is going to wait on. Aladdin?
Yeah.
Kelly, talk a little bit about LBS.
Similar to level two, the teacher would complete a level three tracking form. One thing that I did not note is when this form is completed, there are certain staff members that have access to the responses. And so we've set up notifications, so we will get an email alert as soon as the form is completed. That's the social workers, school psychologists, Kathleen Turner Quach, myself. That way we can sort of decide who's available to go meet with the student. It could be something that a social worker might make some initial contact to start to problem solve. And then we can decide where administrator follow up might be required. Sometimes the behavior does rise to level three, but immediate removal isn't necessarily required. We feel like the student is safe, there, it may have disrupted learning for a moment, but things are in control. And then the administrator can go follow up with the student when it's a good time for them or call them down to try to maybe help regulate everyone in the classroom. In this case of level three, the administrator would follow up with the teacher and the family or any other teachers that are involved. If there's a case manager, or if maybe the student isn't a special and that's where things occurred, making sure that the classroom teacher is aware of the communication, the conversation that occurred, and then of course, making sure that the family is aware.
And I should clarify, that happens at the middle school too, where there may be a level three that doesn't require immediate removal from a classroom setting. And others that do. Some of those behaviors. We go back to language that's, well, stronger swearing, vulgar, directed at others specifically, verbal threats, physical threats, physical aggression towards oneself or towards others. So those examples, right, hitting, pushing, kicking, spitting, bullying behavior, sexually explicit language and harassment, serious vandalism of property or theft, racist, anti-religious comments to others, mob action, disrespectful group behavior, fleeing or eloping. It's on the run, I mean, these are all things that are, are not common, but are level threes. And so responses, when you look there, we're talking about again, level ones and twos that are continued, sorry, any reaction, any response that we would use for level ones and twos could come into play here. Family contact is, is automatic, behavior monitoring contracts, those are things that I mentioned already, it's possible level twos, but definitely probably in a level three. Problem solving team, it may be that the behavior is escalating to the point that all of our previous supports that we've tried or put into place are still not working. And bringing that specific case to our problem solving team to sit down and review the data on, talk about what is working, what isn't working, is something that may be a next step. Mentioned already, the potential removal from extracurricular, co-curricular activities, time in the office, removal from class. In some cases, that looks like, you know, time in my office or time in Mr. Jackson's office in between either sort of counseling sessions or investigation into what's happened, they may still be given access to schoolwork to do while in the office. But, but again, they may stay there until that level three behavior, but then it's all, we've had all of our communication that needs to be done. Lunchtime consequences, and then down here at the bottom of the list specifically because Senate Bill 100 is really kind of requiring us to keep those things to the minimum. That's the in-school and out-of-school suspensions, expulsions, violent criminal charges. Those are the sorts of things that have to be on the list, but, but tend to be last reports. Wanted to talk about the kind of the opposite end of things, right? The importance of building those positive relationships, I talked about that in terms of relationships with the parents. Here are some of the things that we're also doing on the other side in addition to communication when behaviors happen. At the middle school, we also have our electronic bluffer cards. The structure behind that, as far as the automatic emails and, and communication with families and with advisors and with the kids. We love to be able to celebrate what kids are doing well, they're displaying those bluffer traits and we're seeing it happen. Making a point of highlighting it with a bluffer card or even just a happy Friday email or, or a phone call. Those are really valuable things so that hopefully when a parent hears from us at school, the first communication they hear is not a negative one. Or it's not a communication about a behavior. We love for them to understand that we're looking for the positives in their, in their kids. We also do our bluffer assemblies with those, our bluffer drawings. So students who are recognized with a bluffer card, they get entered into a drawing, we pull the name out, we celebrate that and they get an option to get involved in school in some way that they see fit. Usually a menu of options. One of my favorites is helping me with the fire drill and actually triggering the fire drill, that gets selected sometimes. And obviously our opportunity to talk with parents during parent teacher conferences is another way in which we try and build those positive relationships.
I think similar in LBS, we know that being proactive and having positive interactions from the beginning does make it a little easier when harder conversations come about. So your first point of contact isn't kind of a challenging delivery of information about something that their child was involved in. And so we've listed just some collective things that pause classroom parties. So there's individual systems that each classroom has to celebrate behavior, but it's still connected to school-wide language. Feeding the fox is the pause ticket that's pictured there on the bottom instead of individual drawings. We have collect, now we're sort of collectively working towards a goal and that idea of team and positive decision-making. We can all celebrate with things like extra recess, popsicles, pie and principles in the face, game days. So really having some fun with that. The pause postcards are still a huge component of making a positive phone call home from a C K or myself. Teachers are also working to carve out time to send a positive email or make a positive phone call. Our pause assemblies are a way to not only do some school-wide teaching of expectations, but also to kind of celebrate or hone in on an area where maybe collectively we're having some challenges that we can reteach. Usually getting students involved with that has been really engaging. And then fax families are ways to build relationships with students and staff throughout the building.
We talked a lot about how we teach expectations for kids, wanted to highlight a few of the ways in which we communicate what those are to parents. Obviously, the parent's hand book that every parent is required to sign off on is one way to do that. And I know that every parent that signs off on it reads it cover to cover. But in addition to that, back to school night is another way in which we try and reinforce some of those, so big items, right? The common things that we want to make sure parents keep in the forefront of their mind, we'll, we'll mention that during back to school night. We have different parent informational nights throughout the year and, and some of those have been very informative. Sometimes talking about social media, use of personal cell phone devices, variety of ways in which we would kind of target specific topics. Parents teacher conferences, again, another opportunity to talk about what's going well and what might need to be an area for improvement. Principal updates, we try and include not only kind of updates about what's happening weekly, what's to come, but also throw things in there as they arise, right? For the end of the year, included some information about e-bikes and motor driven cycles. And so like, they're just sort of weekly topics that are going to appear in those principal updates. And then of course, you know, we will respond and initiate conversations as kids make mistakes, right? So sometimes that learning opportunity comes from the child's learning opportunity and the parent may not have known that that was an expectation. So that'd be an option.
Done to like grade level, maybe there's some particular sort of event or scenario or issue or challenge at the fifth grade level. And so once it's been addressed, we want to make sure that parents are aware that that has happened and conversations have been held. Because maybe it does include larger numbers of students. And so putting information out in a responsive way is also an opportunity for us to sort of clarify again, expectations around kind of behavior. One more fruit five.
It's just a bug plant, I know exactly what you're trying to. Well, maybe that's our signal to ramp up, so. Questions that any of you have?
I just want to say thank you, I mean, that was a lot of really good information and just a really good reminder of what you guys deal with outside of like metrics and academics and all the stuff. And how it doesn't always get reinforced at home, so it's like a lot that you both have to handle. I had two questions, is there any way the board could do like a little shout?
Yes.
I don't know if there's more in depth than that, but it's something very interesting.
I didn't talk about the blue mirror that we frequently use to start our administrative team meetings, but.
Checking in our emotions.
You could start doing that before and after board meetings. Like we used to have an app, what was the app that?
Blue?
Blue. Yeah. Puppet era app.
Yeah. Okay, definitely bring that though.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Put it in as a future topic or.
And like, like I said, tons of information. I'm picturing, what if I was a sub? And I feel like maybe I'm like in nineteen sixty again where kids are like, yeah, so then you get a little more rowdy. Or like, how is that communicated with subs and how they're supposed to respond or react to certain instances?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I do think an opportunity for some improvement, I will say that we really, both my Joe and myself, and I know at the elementary building, it's the same thing. Where we want to check in with our guest teachers when they arrive, make sure they know who we are, make sure they know how to reach us if need, need be. We also encourage all of our subs to check in with a staff member who's very nearby to the space that they're assigned to. And we've really encouraged our staff members to say hello to our guest teachers, say, hey, I'm here if you have any questions, here if you need me. Of course, the detailed lesson plans that, that a, a teacher would leave and provide has all of the specifics about what to do. And sometimes a heads up about a student who might need some support in a particular area. I will say, feedback that we get from our guest teachers has been generally very positive and, and it's really exciting to hear. Not that I want to hear that other schools aren't as good, but you know, it makes you feel good when they say, this is the only place I really like to come. So because the kids are wonderful and I appreciate this, so, but, but it is a good point. And I'll tell you, we also have a heightened presence when we know that we've got advice, uh, uh, guest teachers in the room. We're gonna walk by when we pop in, soon we'll have an easy way to pop in really fast without putting the key in and make it even quicker thing.
We do, we do a guest teacher training at the beginning of the year and all newly hired guest teachers also get a video, or me, about some of our expectations and things too. Just how to like, some of it's crisis, some of it's emergencies, some of it's portrait of an adult, like what we expect our adults to be like, what we expect of our students. So there's kind of various ways we try to do that, but I, I mean, here the same thing. And obviously with that, or with any staff member, confidentiality is really important around what is going on with students. Because these are some of the areas that can be the most disruptive, but also student privacy is really important.
I, I would say the level forms are not something that we should ask our guest teachers to fill out. We're not, I just don't want them to have to do sort of one more thing or navigate something with technology. But if we know that maybe a student is having a particularly difficult day or week, or we've been meeting with them, we might pop in to just say, hey, things have been a little bit challenging. Do not hesitate to fall to office or, you know, just reassuring them that like, this isn't about you or your ability or inability to navigate student behavior. That like, we want to be there to support and they shouldn't, that is sort of a burden or a piece that we want to help with so that they can look forward to coming back again.
But we also try and reinforce with our guest teachers that providing feedback and letting us know specifically how things went is really critical. We actually have a form that we use for that at the middle school. And then based on that feedback, we may then be following up with students as a, as a level one or a level two. Because, oh, we know this happened and now we want to process it. And, and I would also say too, if, if a teacher knows, for example, that that happens, that absence is coming, they're going to be gone tomorrow, they always talk to their kids about it. Here's what's happening tomorrow, not able to be here, here are my expectations, here's what you're going to work on. Sometimes they layer on an incentive, you know, there's some motivation there to really, you know, handle things the way that they need to be handled.
Well, and similarly along with making sure guest teachers know what to do, I know that our teachers are trained in what to do, but how, you know, when do they learn this information, is it reinforced each year? Kind of how do we stay on top of the teachers, knowing the responses for level one, level two, level three?
I think we provide refreshers each year. In fact, as we were preparing for this, Kathleen and I were meeting and talking through things, we're like, all right, first faculty meeting, not only first faculty meeting, but our new staff orientation. We just, let's make sure that we're again clarifying. And when a teacher maybe makes a mistake or, you know, they put a level two form in, which is really something that could have been handled in the classroom, then we're following up later to just say, I wonder how you could navigate this on your own? And really sort of clarify again, the different levels. But I feel like we present on it each and every year, it's visible in our daily update document, our Fox four one one has frequently visited documents. So there are teacher friendly versions of the different levels of behavior, ways to respond. We can, we're attending team meetings regularly and so if we're noticing that there's sort of an uptick in a particular behavior with a grade level, we can reference back to kind of maybe we've been responding with this, what if we tried something different and, and support and problem solve? Our teams too are still attending the cohorts through foundations. And so they'll have meetings this summer and they tend to come back then with kind of the kickoff meeting and an update for student behavior. As I said, we're going to refresh those posters and visuals, so that'll be another opportunity to just draw attention to the importance of consistency in how we follow up.
I know we add that it's not just coming from us, that team meeting is really important and often you'll hear a team member express a concern, another team member say, did you do this? That you remember to put it on this form? And so, oh yeah, you're right, and like, you know, it's, it's, it's integrated into the day to day in a way that is carrying it forward, so. Any other questions?
You know, I have just, I want to have a little discussion about our, our policy. And I think this, any of the systems that you've got are fantastic and I'm, I'm really glad to see those. Even as a sub, I wasn't really fully aware of, of everything that went on. But in my, in my years, I've kind of found one thing that really ninety-eight percent of our students are fantastic. And they respond, they can be misdirected, redirected. You know, they'll, they'll, you know, the parents respond, the, the system works really well. But there are just things every year, a couple of students. And, and it's just, you know, we can't seem to get them, their behavior to improve significantly. And it's, it's frustrating to the teachers, it's frustrating to the staff. You know, send the, the other students start getting distracted. So they had just a big disproportionate thing of impact. And then I want to check the policy, you know, there's really nothing in the policy. Every, all of the systems that we've got in place and all the procedures, there's nothing in the policy that really addresses classroom behavior. And, and so I just, you know, there's, it's, it's very general, you know, it says we expect, you know, to achieve a, a good academic environment. And then it goes into a lot of specifics about, you know, disciplining for weapons, for drugs, for cigarettes, for all of these things. But it never really specifically talks about classroom behavior. And it also is kind of specific, you know, focuses on like individual incidents. You know, it talks about, you know, if you've got a weapon, you know, this, you got a weapon. And it says if, if these are, I think the language is like gross.
Gross disobedience.
Yeah, gross disobedience or, and, and if, you know, if it meets that definition, here's, you know, this. And it has language including, but not limited to, so it's, it's open ended. You know, it doesn't tie our hands to only those things. And then it says, you know, here's potential disciplinary actions, but again, that's open and it's not limited to those. But it gets to be very specific without ever talking about classroom behavior. And also we're talk, without talking about, you know, kind of repetitive violations of classroom behavior, mostly, you know, failure to follow directions. And I just wonder if it would be helpful, and I'm sure it's not there for a reason. And I looked in like almost every other school has exactly the same, you know, boilerplate that, that we have, uses the same legal review system and updating. So I'm sure it's not there for a reason, but I just wonder if it would be helpful to have a place to go to in the policy for teachers, parents, whatever. And say, you know, misbehaving or disrupt, disruptive, inappropriate behavior in a classroom is a qualifies as a gross, you know, misbehavior or something. And, and just so it's there. But the other thing is, is to figure out some way that also can recognize and encourages students like not to cross the line, not to do that one extra step, you know, that, that, that generates, you know, that might end up in a, in a suspension or, or in loss of privileges so that they know, well, I've gone so far, I've gone so far, I'd better not do it again, or this is going to happen. You know, a fear factor, I guess, you know, a system that, that has. You know, a fear factor, I guess, you know, a system that, that has some sort of a fear factor there. And, you know, I, I just throw those out as, as ideas. You guys are handling it every day and I don't know if that kind of thing would be helpful or not.
Can I interrupt for one second? In the first part of your question, where you're asking about adding anything to the policy for reference for parents or anyone. Yes, you're right, policy is not specific on that, but is the student handbook?
I will admit I haven't.
Does the student handbook have that in there?
Yeah, the student handbook is more specific information about behavior and expectations in the, in the school setting. I, I think a couple of thoughts come to mind as I'm listening to that question. The one thing that I would really want to make sure we put out there is that every behavior and every incident is nuanced and different. It's a very difficult thing to have a universal response to classroom behaviors. Cause I can tell you what I saw this year and how many new and different things I saw this year compared to previous years and years before that. I mean, there were things that we just never kind of anticipated or expected. And so we have to be able to respond to those things appropriately. But also recognize that we do have really, really have firm language and great language around those, those incidents of gross disobedience. And I think those are valuable and we lean into those in those situations because we need to, because we're talking about significant consequences that result from that. As far as board policy to specific classroom behavior. Certainly that's up to the board to have a conversation about. I would suggest that we have some really strong procedures and policies in place to respond to those things that we feel confident and comfortable in. If we need to make adjustments there, we're certainly open to that. But I'm not feeling, just from the building level administrative perspective, that I don't have the support that I need because of board policy. So I guess I just want to be clear about that.
I think we, just emphasizing too, as you started, like the very, very small percentage or very small number of students that we are talking about. I think is important to keep in mind and sort of the uniqueness potentially of each sort of situation. And a lot of behind the scenes work that is happening individually with students, their families, the staff that work along with them.
I think the other thing that I would say is that we want for students to know and to understand that we will respond to their behavior. We will work to support them. There is a danger in telling them exactly what it is we're going to do in every case. Because that gives a student the opportunity to consider it and decide whether or not they're comfortable with that and go ahead and do it anyway. And so I think you have to recognize that what motivates one student to behave in a certain way has no bearing on the way that another student might behave. And so, and also it's worth considering that there are behaviors that are the result of, or it, it results in a variety of things, trauma, disability. It's hard also to apply a blanket reaction when you're dealing with kids that are coming with such varying backgrounds. And so those are all elements that we have to take into consideration.
To me, I think the vagueness, it protects students, but I think it also protects the school. Obviously, we're not tying your hands to, well, it says this, because then you can have a parent or teacher going back to you and saying, well, it says, let's get to do it. And then, and, and again, in your case, if the students misbehave and are doing something minor, but say, well, it says, we have to do this to them. So I think it protects everyone to keep it a little bit more vague.
And to handle it on a case basis. And I know you can't answer this unilaterally, but generally speaking, do you get a sense that the? I, I agree with you. I think two percent of the students cause ninety percent of the problems. But do the teachers generally, from your sense, feel with all these systems in place? I worry often that they're like scared of the parents. I, 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 you know, do they feel empowered and supported where they're like, we have clear guidelines, so I know I can. Do they feel like they can take the necessary actions?
I would say I just, I do think that they feel supported and I think the expectations are clear. I do think sometimes there is fear or concern or worry.
Yeah. Is there something that the school board can do to make them feel more supported or understand that we do support them taking action in the classroom when and if necessary? And maybe that's something you need to think about, you don't have to have an answer right this second, but.
If I could stop, and I, I do think before the school board support, the biggest support they have is in the front office in each of the buildings. Because I can tell you, and I was going to say this before, there's not a time when I walk into either building, when at some point in my interaction with one of the four of them, they're going to address a behavior. And whether it's a positive thing or making a positive postcard, or whether it's calling home to a parent or literally running to a classroom to support a student behavior and, and teachers. Or conferencing with a parent, our administrators are hands on in terms of that. And I think that open lines of communication between parents and teachers, teachers and administrators, parents, teachers and administrators together. There's any combination of things that might need to take place to change student behavior. I, I think that that's something we can ask teachers about if they're feeling supported. Or if there's something the board or administrative team could do. But that would be my first question is, are you feeling supported by your building at first?
Good point, and I certainly do not mean to imply that you guys are not supported.
No, no, by all. And I know for everyone, and I don't know that it's like paralyzing fear, but I do think since the questions are asked, there are instances. And I'm kind of like, yeah, let's call together, right? Or let's communicate together or let's set something up so that you do feel like someone can participate in that conversation. Or maybe I heard it differently, right? Like, oh, like if they are feeling, I don't want the word attack feels a little bit dramatic, but like, gosh, that was off putting or I felt defensive. I will, maybe I could quit, like I heard it this way or here's like, maybe re-putting things in perspective at times is just another thing. But I do think we can continue to ask just how we can do to support if there is a fear piece happening. Making them know that this presentation was appreciated and that they continue to be supported by the board, I think is important.
I, I do want to be real clear. I, this is an incredibly supportive parent community and the vast majority of their actions that we have, even about behavior, which is very emotional. That can be tough to get the call. Like there's a stigma with Principal Blackmore, I know that. When I pick up the phone and calling and I lead with, hey, everything's fine here at school. And then the next thing I want to know is what did my kid do? And so, you know, that's not always why I called, I want to be clear. But like, I, we, we understand that when we're calling and talking about behaviors, these are your kids, these are the most important people in their lives. And so that's just part of our work that we do is, is helping to convey that families, we care about your child and recognize you're going to make mistakes. I wouldn't be out of work if they didn't make a mistake.
And I kind of got it too. It's like, oh, I'm nervous to call, but then they come back around like that actually went really well. So sometimes it is like teachers don't go into teaching to have behavior conversations with parents. They go in for all of the other joys and reasons, but we know that that's part of why we're here too.
Well, I would just say, I mean, it's clearly very thoroughly thought out and intentional in the way that behavior is addressed at school. So thank you for that. And if there is anything in the future that you need from us, support wise, directive wise, whatever, we're here. Thank you.
Bye.
You guys are doing a great job. All right, technology update.
All right, I'm going to do this over here so I can run a live stream still. If you do remember, I started this last month before I was passed out. So let's continue this one and hopefully we don't have that happen again. So I did touch on this a little bit. Hopefully Tim just answered some of your questions of what things you asked for, just about updates on initiatives with some of the things that we presented to the board and asked for. And so I did touch on this with the technology committee in the anxious generation. I think with the impact, the, the introduction of the tech committee and the anxious generation book discussion, the middle column to me is the most visible impact that our community and our teachers and everyone has seen with students now taking devices home, pulling back devices at the early grade levels. And especially YouTube pullback for teachers. And I'll go into some detail on the following slides. There we go. So one thing that I've asked a lot for is money. And so we've looked at, we've, we've picked up a lot of subscriptions in the last two years, mainly for device management, to automate a lot of things, new websites. And so some of the questions the board might have is what are we doing with some of our other subscriptions? So one thing that we consistently do in about January is gather a list of all our subscriptions and we have a pretty good idea of where, where everything is now, where it's coming from. And we, we look at that and pull the reports on what are we getting in return of investment? Who's using it? Is it worth the use? And so over the last two years, we've been able to eliminate over twenty subscriptions. And, and Dick, I know you had a question yesterday about the budget of that. This is a tricky one to look at. It's been really good that we've eliminated them, we've consolidated a lot of subscriptions. However, every subscription that we have in education is on a three to seven percent escalation per year. And so it depends on the company who makes it, the size on that percentage escalation. And so while I say we've estimated, we saved over twenty thousand dollars, it's hard because while we've eliminated, we've cut that money out, but then we still pay for these existing subscriptions. Which is why we continue analyzing, looking at them, looking at them year after year. And so we'll continue doing that, but I'm happy to say that we've done that. Most recently, Power School is our biggest expense in terms of operations subscriptions. It runs almost everything for us with student information, enrollment, school G's. We have four or five subscriptions with them. They escalated to seventy percent per year per subscription. And so we were able to work with them and lock in a five years for thirty percent. So we're trying to do the best we can to make sure that those escalations remain minimal for the things that we have to have. In February, I did present that we were going to eliminate, and you guys approved eliminating that fifty six a year and a half earlier than was intended. We onboard Sentinel and happy to say as of yesterday, we officially cut ties with net fifty six and removed them completely. With doing that, we're seeing an annual savings of about forty thousand dollars. And then on top of that, just seeing things that we haven't had before and onboarding with Sentinel, what we're already getting. We, at the, the top left, and this doesn't mean much to you, but to us it does. At the top left is a dashboard of all of our network equipment, all our services that we can log in at any time from home. We get alerts and now Sentinel monitors that twenty four hours a day. Net fifty six did that as well, but Sentinel takes it a step a little bit further. And I constantly get emails and text messages depending on severity of alerts. So if we lose power within about five minutes, they get a call from Sentinel at home anytime of the day. Sometimes I appreciate it, but we know what's going on before it happens. So that's, that's been a big one that I can log in and see that dashboard anytime. On the right is our cybersecurity dashboard, which we now have access to. All our devices have new cybersecurity software on them and antivirus that scans all the time. And we have access to this dashboard that gives us feedback on, on all of our devices that's going on. So something we didn't have with net fifty six and has been a really nice addition to Sentinel. I talked a little bit about the iPads, the transition to the iPads and how we're moving to those pretty much half next year and then full the year after that. And kind of how we've managed to fund that. Our original plan was to purchase outright, but we kind of shifted to financing at zero percent. And just kind of looking at what that does and, and in the long term and why we kind of decided to look at that method. This doesn't mean a whole lot, but what this is, is our device replacement plan. And I've, I've put together all the devices that we have to replace as a district. And the, the blue is obviously if we stick with Chromebooks or stuck with Chromebooks. The green, I believe, the green was if we purchased Apple devices outright every year. And then the yellow is what we moved to, which was financing. And so you'll notice a big difference in the Apple purchase versus financing. The, one of the main ones is that is this year, you can see the huge drop off in what we were going to spend and what we didn't have to spend because we financed. And then also by not taking devices home at elementary anymore, we no longer are going to purchase the warranty from them because they're not taking the building. So that'll save us a pretty substantial amount. And then also no more devices are associated with them out. So that's where you get that little bit of discrepancy in price between purchase and financing. So what we're looking at, what I'm looking at mainly is the last from like twenty eight to thirty four, thirty five. You can see some fluctuation in the yellow bars, but what I'm really looking at is the last four or five years where you start to see that leveling out where that yellow bar is consistent. The only changes we have, which we could predict for is projectors at both buildings. And then some of our other devices that we wouldn't finance, like our steam lincolns, they're not really nice sets versus finance. So I'm really looking at the devices that are used by students and by teachers because the perks we get out of financing. So what we're really looking at, like I said, is those last five, six years where you start to see that consistent line and balance continuing to work toward that. And that takes some manipulation in the first couple of years, but we get there. Throughout this year, we've started prepping teachers in the, the buildings in the district for iPads. I'm happy to say I was able to work with the tech committee and get release times with teachers and that was per their recommendation. So every grade level that's getting iPads next year went through two half day releases with me. And, and the first session was just kind of getting into the device. iPads have changed a lot since teachers last had Apple devices, I think six years ago. And also getting their hands on devices, understanding the classroom management with them. And then session two focused more on the actual instructional side of how they can use these devices and not just use iPads, you know, a, a fact checking device, but more on a creative level. This year, we were able to get every teacher and every teaching assistant the same device that students will have in the next two years. So we want to get them familiar with those devices, especially those our assistants who work with those students every day and all day. And then instructional enhancements, we're continuing to look at, like I said, subscriptions. We are canceling things, but we're also trying to give things that everyone uses from the iPads. Apple Classroom is a classroom management tool that's free to us from Apple. Currently we pay for GoGuardians, so that's going to be a nice one for us to budgetarily cut out after next year. That's free and that helps teachers view the students' iPads when they're in classes, they can lock the iPads, they can direct them to a certain app. Pretty basic, but helpful for them. And then a couple of other instructional tools and subscriptions that we have picked up in replacement for some of the other ones we canceled. Lit Lab is our first AI one for use for teachers and it helps teachers create decodables at the younger levels for understanding. And then Slink is our, our video streaming platform where teachers can find educate, educational content that is copyrighted. This company works with the copyrighted companies like Disney or National Geographic and gets us copies of those to be able to straighten them. And then we're also looking at shifting to more built in tools. And that's where the instructional, the professional development came in, really getting teachers to focus on using iMovie, GarageBand, Freeform or some of the built in tools and apps that come with the iPads that we don't necessarily have to pay for. And then student distractions, this was something we presented on in February at the parent committee meeting. Initially, we thought teachers were going to not, we're going to be a little more reluctant to go with this, but we presented the idea of blocking YouTube for students. And teachers, the original plan was to do it at the beginning of this coming school year. Teachers were on board and wanted it done like that. So we expedited that, we started doing it March first. So just to give you a little bit more data on that, and this was when we first started the conversation in November. And this is from our, our web filter platform building. You can see YouTube's right at the top there in terms of hours, that's over the month of November. How many hours all of our students spend on YouTube? And that's sixth grade is not on, so that's grades two through five and seven and eight. And the discrepancy on the activity timeline, which you'll notice is much different. The reason being, top websites, YouTube is the actual time spent on YouTube itself below the actual time spent viewing YouTube is like videos that are embedded in other websites that actually go through YouTube. Don't show that they're in YouTube. So that's why you're looking more at the bottom number, that's, that's a big number. And so that was November, that's the data we brought to technology committee and got the approval, the suggestion that we should look at blocking this. And then in March was when we first started doing it and you saw immediately YouTube's no longer on the top websites and it significantly dropped over the month of March. I picked those two months because November, we're getting a week off for Thanksgiving, March, we got for spring breaks, it's pretty, even in terms of instructional days. So really positive stuff, really positive feedback out of that, and that numbers continue to drop. So one thing that we did, and I know we wanted a little bit of feedback from students. I originally had some videos, but decided just to, to sum it up, because our students all kind of said the same thing. But we, we pulled together about seven or eight students from sixth grade and just asked them, hey, what? We gave them all the same six questions, what do you like about iPads? Was it, is it better than the Chromebook? And got really the same feedback and all of them said, we like having the choice of how to use it. And what they mean by that is with the Chromebook, they really only had Google Drive, Google Docs, they had maybe one creative app called WeVideo. Now they have Canva, which works better on the iPad, and they have Freeform, which is built in. And so these are some of the projects they provided me, just a few of them. The, the middle one in the top, I think is the most impressive. That started as just a blank white and then the students drew that. And that was then creating a city state in social studies. And that's Hillary Morris, Hillary Morris quote is from that class. So just asking her for some of her feedback and how positive it's been in terms of getting actual better products from the students as they work in classrooms with the iPads. So as we look, where do we go for next year? Yes, that is me. Um, I, I took an Apple certification class. I decided to kind of have some fun in it. Um, so, uh, updated and improved district network connectivity. We are, as I mentioned in February, we're moving forward with, we eliminated net fifty-six, but using the state's provided internet, we're able to bring a second internet connection into our middle school and each building will be independent of itself, but also fade over if one of the buildings go down. So that'll be a really positive for us. We've installed new firewalls now, which will help us continue, uh, just improving protection for this year. Uh, we are continuing release time for classes that, for the teachers that will get iPads after next year, which will be grades three, four, five and eight. And so they'll get two half-day release times with me throughout the year where we'll again prep them for using iPads. We want to continue, I'm going to skip over to the blue one. We want to continue making sure that they get, um, coaching and teacher development if they want. So I'm looking to maybe start doing some more individual coaching, maybe with some more first and second year teachers, so they can start being comfortable using iPads as they get comfortable in the classroom. Um, we are, we did roll this out at the end of the year, uh, that we are looking to decrease our social media presence from individual teachers. At the end of the year, we asked them to remove all their personal Instagram accounts that relates to the classroom. We're going to focus, have them redirect more of your classroom posting through Seesaw, which is our, uh, provided, uh, district provided platform for that. And then we're also looking to introduce some sort of parent tech night, uh, starting next year. It just kind of gives parents the opportunity to get more educated on what we're doing with the iPads, how they're being used in classrooms and then the middle school specifically, um, since the iPads go home, the teacher, the kids have school G and then that parent management component called Screen Guide, which can manage the iPads at home when they're so we're looking to do that to provide parents our education on what we're doing. Uh, we're introducing in the fall AI staff guidelines for just a general set of guidelines for staff on how we're going to begin using AI. And then also giving them kind of a starting points and giving them the opportunity to possibly get, um, their hangover fans about into using some AI throughout the year, next year. And then we're looking at next year, kind of spring boarding, um, and provide and starting to create some guidelines for students, AI research and follow. So that's kind of where we're looking to go and where we've been. And we're excited.
Thank you, Kevin.
I have one question. How is the workload of like returning all these devices?
I said, yeah.
The workload of bringing, having everyone turn in their devices.
It was, it was fine. Yeah, we had a, we had a good process down and then all of the getting easier is we're only collecting iPads. Then at elementary school later, so.
And I also have a meeting with our new president of the PTO who are also considering ways that they can support parents locking down their other devices at home even. And helping like offering sometimes when the PTO would say like, bring your devices and we'll show you how to do screen time or so everybody's kind of trying to partner together to make sure that we all of our parents are informed and have the tools they need to manage the tech.
Oh, that's great. Any questions for Kevin? Thank you for coming together. Okay, next up is Press Packet one eighteen, first read.
Yeah, so policy committee met. There are approximately ninety-four pages of board policy to review. This is a first read. The board policy is, uh, committee as a reminder, um, meets and reviews all the policies. The majority, and then we're recommending that we go with the press, uh, versions of the policies this time also. Um, a couple of things to note, there's a lot of legal updates in here. There's also a lot of language around expected parents. Those typically, we don't do a lot with those because our kids are not usually at that age. Um, and a lot going back to reverting our Title IX, um, to what it was in twenty twenty. So, um, there's a lot of regulation that's kind of going skipping back to the twenty twenty guidance on Title IX grievance and procedure. So just to review that, um, and we'll do a second read in the next meeting.
Do you want to just explain? Just went to the bathroom, but our one press pack is.
Yep. So Press is a policy subscription service that most districts, um, subscribe to. And it's an organization that keeps up to date on law. Uh, many attorneys, um, review potential policy when the law is updated and then they come to consensus on what good policy should look like for districts. And they give us recommended policies based on the changes in the law. And then we can determine, um, if we want to, to accept those policies and/or the administrative procedures that go along with those policies or we can customize them. Um, I would say that ninety-nine percent of the time, our attorneys would recommend that we go with the press policy because it's been already thoroughly reviewed by attorney, school attorneys and, um, and, uh, just the best practice for districts to, um, to adopt. When you customize a policy also, we, you have to really maintain as a district that customization and keep talking about it if your board might change. Uh, because it might not be reflective of exactly the way the law is written. Um, so we really try to lean into those press packets and recommended policies because, um, it's better to be consistent and make sure that we're, um, adhering to the legal requirements that we.
And like, can, oh, sorry. Each of our policy meetings are open.
They are open.
They're posted and then, uh, if we were to deviate from one of our policies, that would require the work of our lawyers, which I'm going to spend correct.
Yeah, yeah. And we have, we've involved our attorneys, we've involved staff. So for example, sometimes when we look at health policies or medication policies, they'll bring our nurses in to talk with us about it or we get your discipline, we've asked, you know, um, our principals, our social workers to come in and talk. Um, we do regularly, you know, there are regular references in the recommended policies to consult with your attorney if there are things that there are, if there are choices for districts to make and we will do that at that time as well.
I was just going to add that the language that is written into these policies that is reviewed by the state school board attorneys is very particular. Right? And so it has certain legal implications. When you say something like being but not limited to or shall or may. Shall versus may is a big one, right? And so if it is not necessary or super important to our district to be customizing policies, it's better to keep with those that are written then so that we aren't doing any unintended legal changes.
Yeah, especially because they often update just legal case, case law, like the legal references are often updated. And then if we don't keep on top of what's customized, we might inadvertently revert back to the recommended policy versus our own. But there aren't, there weren't any choices for us in this one, aside from some language that we got, um, advised on. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Anything on any of the policies? All right. Let's move on to our tentative budget presentation.
We present the tentative budget in June. And, uh, it is then on display, um, on our website for a minimum of thirty days. We'll come back in August or September and pass the final budget. So this is just the first, first draft. Uh, I'm saying there's zero net change in operating fund balance. I'm not really saying balance. You, the budget is balanced, but due to some new lease accounting, I have to book the full expense of the, the Apple iPads and then book another source for the money that we're to not own. Complicated, but basically there's, there's no change in fund balance, but I'm going to, I'm showing a small operating loss above. Our debt service is pretty flat and we're not spending a lot of capital, uh, of our operations this year. So the key is that we're, we're balanced. Some of the assumptions for revenue, uh, based on the twenty-five, twenty-four tax levy that we passed in December, uh, our tax revenue is going up three point three percent. Uh, our tax levy is going up three point three percent. Three point four percent of that is on existing property and the rest is going to be new property. The money that was refunded, uh, to taxpayers last year due to, assessment appeals is added back to this year's levy. That's about a hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. Our debt service levy is again pretty flat, going up point three percent. And I've lowered the collection rate this year to ninety-eight and a half percent. I've always held it at about ninety-nine and a half percent, but in the last two years, we've not collected, but I'm used to correcting. Um, I think it's, the county's made it a lot easier to appeal. It's all online and we're seeing a lot more activity. So I'm adjusting the budget accordingly. State revenue, uh, is flat where in terms of evidence-based funding, we're a category or a tier four district. So we get the base funding minimum every year. Uh, federal revenue, we don't get a lot, but we, we did have, and it's also not necessarily reflected in in my budget because it happened while I was on vacation, but
Welcome back.
It's not a big impact. Uh, the title funding didn't come in as we expected it to. Our title one funding was reduced to about fifty percent and our title two funding was, they didn't fund title two. Net, that's only about fifty thousand dollars and it doesn't impact the, how it's budgeted because I budgeted the group revenue and the expense may offset. It may impact as we move forward and decide how we're going to meet all the needs of this year. We may need to put some of that money back into, onto our local dollars and I think that will happen between now and the final budget. Local taxes are also lower during, uh, right after COVID. They spiked and they're sort of kind of coming on the way back down. We're actually a little bit short this year, so I adjusted that down and then interest income is remaining high. And interest rates have remained high that the Fed is not lowering short-term rates yet. So we're able to book our due taxes, get investments of our due taxes that are, that are kind of good for the student. Looking at about a one point nine percent increase in operating revenue and a total of one point six percent increase in total revenue. As I said, this pie chart hasn't changed about almost ninety percent of our revenue is from local property taxes. Federal revenue is only two percent of our, our income. State is about three percent and then other local revenue is our fees for insurance. In total, we're going to six percent. Looking at expenditures, uh, our net salaries are going up two point two percent. We had a point five FTD reduction in staff, uh, teaching staff and a point five FTD increase in support staff. So the net worth, uh, flat in staffing. We did have a lot of retirements, um, last year and we've got some new staff coming in that what you'll see on the personnel report that are all hired towards the lower end of the, of the salary schedule. So that's then for this year. We are in the second year of our CBA, uh, which also, which carries significant increases for existing staff. The first two years were very, we had very large increases. Uh, support staff is four to six percent. I mean, increases were at four and then we are increasing our guest teacher and guest nurse rate rates as well this year. A big, a nice surprise and a big, uh, impact to the budget was that our health insurance premiums are actually decreasing. We had a very good renewal year, renegotiated our prescription, um, with our prescription, our vendors. And so we're seeing a decrease in insurance rates. We did rebid our RJV custodial contract. We had GSF last year and then we went out to bid again. So we're seeing a fairly, uh, quite significant increase, not as big as last year's, but, uh, about a six percent increase in that contract. Uh, that contract is capped at three percent for the next five years or CPI or three percent. So those increases should temper. Olson, we actually saw, again, we had, we had a great five-year, um, we did transportation. We had a five-year contract with Olson. We got a decrease in our rate, um, our route rate and I'm still planning on keeping ten routes. Um, so that would, that's what's in this current budget. We talked about software, you know, from, we're seeing three to seven percent increases. I've seen a couple of twenties, like software just comes in and they're giving you a twenty, twenty-five percent increase and it's, it's only a couple handful of, of, uh, software packages, but we are limiting our software. So we know we don't need, so that's good. And then our property casualty insurance rates were flat. We can be a good experience. Our special education costs are always uncertain as students could move in and out of the district, but I'm expecting five outplace students next year with four one-one-eights, which is more higher than this year. So we should see an increase in our special education costs. Technology spending, um, as Kevin pointed out, five new class sets of iPads. Uh, but we are using a four-year interest free lease for those. Uh, we should, uh, given the, the true north reorganization, we're expecting some increased legal expenditures as we work through that with our other districts. And then, um, we were able to spend, we were able to book about half of the door lab project or a big portion of the door lab project into this fiscal year. So our budgeting for two hundred fifty thousand of that to hit, uh, next year as we'll spend it this summer right after June for a year. A net two point three increase in operating expenditures. You can see salaries, uh, two point two percent increase that I mentioned with some new staff offsetting the increases for current staff. Uh, benefits are going down and then purchase services and supplies are not changing a lot. It looks like a big percentage increase, but it's a small part of it. And then the dues and fees increases is special education. Just by fund operating funds are two point three percent. And last year we finished up our part paying for parking lot. So that this year or next year, we're seeing.
We all know your game.
We all know your deal. Salaries and benefits, it's about two thirds if you count our debt service, uh, at ten percent. I count for a two thirds of our spending. If you exclude debt service, about three quarters of our spending. Purchase services is another fifteen percent and that is mostly night custodial and transportation. So very personnel intensive business. And then your worst flies and capital only make up about five percent of our spending. I, this, we refinanced our debt service last year. And so this comes from that. We saved a little bit of interest. Um, I'm meeting with our financial advisors this summer to talk about potentially putting some that are in there after twenty twenty-nine to, um, manage our tax rate and to basically pay for some of the ongoing maintenance needs of the district that we probably can before that operating budget. So that would, so there was the tax burden, still seeing a pretty large debt service and tax return decrease after flying from that. And then our fund balance, as I said, that is, our operating balance is projected to remain flat for next year. And the about forty percent of operating expenditures, which is right one thousand five hundred and fifty percent.
This is the first time since I've been on a board, I've ever seen the transportation. Good luck.
I, I wasn't expecting it. We when we have to go back every year in April and talk about it and we have no other options, it's hard again. We're not running a big motion position. And the way bus driver salaries have been going up, it's been harder stuff. I think that's, that's evened out. So we're able, Olson, the three districts that use Olson went back and went on today and they want to keep us because we're all their business and we wanted to keep them because they do a good job. I don't want to import a new bus company. So I'll work on.
Then were you, uh, just wanting to make sure you understand, saying that you think at twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, some of their, you'll, will take out more debt to pay for capital projects so that we can then keep our reserve within the big fifteen percent range?
Yeah. So I, I think that we we, we just, so this will be part, I'll present this in the fall, but we did a big facility assessment with our architects this summer as part of our life safety. So they outlined near four million dollars of just ongoing maintenance that the district will need to do on, on capital over the next five to 10 years. And so that may be difficult to absorb all women are operating budget. And in order to do that and without using your fund balance, since we're, we don't have a lot, you know, once you spend that, your fund balance.
We're so much shit, right? Yeah.
This is, and this is a good opportunity. Really, um, it's a good opportunity because when you're asking for money, when people's tax rates are going down anyway, people are a lot more to approve. So if we say, you know, your tax rate is going to go from two dollars to a dollar fifty, people are happy about that. If it would have gone to a dollar twenty-five. People are happy about that. If it would have gone to a dollar twenty five, when you, once you're around a dollar twenty five, it's a lot harder to go back to a dollar fifty. So I think, I will talk with our financial advisor about what our options are. We give some fund, fund balance in our debt service fund that I can move some things around to get access to. And there's some interest in, that are, in funds that are not operating funds that we probably access, but ideally once you lower your tax rates, play your hand again, so gradually reduce it and make sure that you have the funds needed to.
Sure. Is that best than the tax base?
I mean, and then you're spreading off, spreading that cost over the current and future users of the building versus hitting the all the current users.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, just one question about the collect tax collection rate. So that one and a half percent that's not collected, is that part of what's we, the recaptured?
Right. So that's added back to the following year.
Okay.
And so it wants to, now we're sort of hitting steady state with that. So if we, we're essentially getting back to our ninety nine percent.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So Jay, thanks for, and we get to see all of this in advance and have a chance to go through it and look at it. I mean, at the high level, it looks, it looks very good. But I had, because I just wanted to challenge a couple of the expenses. So I don't know if this was a good time to do that or not.
The expenses that were already expended?
Oh, no, 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 that are in the next year. And I mean, specifically, we got like eighty percent of the households, I think in the, in Lake Bluff don't have kids in the street. So I took just like seven hundred households with, with kids and thirty five hundred total households. And I haven't talked to all like eighty percent of those, but those that I've talked to, and which is a very limited survey, you know, all their, their main interest is, you know, they want to have good schools. You know, that, that really produce, you know, meet the goals that we're trying to achieve with everything. And the, and the students do well when they get to high school because that keep their property values high. Or, you know, the, the, not property values, but the, yeah, property values, the house, the housing market good. And they want to see low taxes. So.
Well, everybody wants high property values and they want access.
Exactly. And they're not interested in anything to do with anything else that goes on with the school that much. They're happy to see if we win a state championship and something or somebody, you know.
There's no, everyone can see driving in who like blocks going east.
But things like spending on public relations for this group is not, when I specifically ask that question, you know, I get a very negative reaction. So I would, I would challenge, like the calendars we send out, you know, I wouldn't send them to these eighty percent. Most, almost a hundred percent of them said they just go straight in the trash. They don't look at it, you know, and maybe just, you know, print extras, have them, put it in the village newsletter or something saying, if you want them, you know, school calendar, obviously send it to the, the households with all our students. I mean, they're extremely useful. It's a great, great resource for them. But I mean, it's a little bit. But I would also expand it to just challenge, like a lot of money we're spending on, on PR. And I, as today in the age of chat GPT, I mean, I've even used it. You know, you can, you can make something. You can make something look sound, it look very good without, you know, without Allerton Hill. Without, you know, just, we don't need, I don't think we need high level support for our PR efforts. And I know this is in the four percent level of the budget, four percent of everything, you know. But that's really the only thing we got to work with.
I challenge you go to maybe like talk to people outside of, you people I can talk to that don't want the calendar. Cause I have had opposite conversations. So I don't know if it's helpful to maybe like broaden those experiences or maybe even recognize that if they are want is to have great schools, like there's costs associated and times move ahead. So we have to kind of keep up some of Jones's of like what that takes, salaries.
No, the calendar, the calendar makes just an example of, and you're right, there are some people that want it. And we ought to find that someone to make it available to them. But, you know, I'd rather see that same amount of money going into the cash in the classroom. And then we're talking about, you know, trying to find funding for teary, funding for other kinds of, of, of things. So I would challenge that as we go forward with the budget.
I want to assure you that we are always looking at our expenditures and kind of best decisions where we can and look for any additional revenue where we can.
I would point out that getting a positive message out to the community about all of the things that are going on at the schools, not just dates and times and things, but positive, you know, sending that message out that people, the entire community gets, knowing all of the things that we are doing in the school so that they have a good, even if they don't have a relationship with the school, they have a good idea of what's happening in the school. They understand that our schools are positive, good places to be that do help their property values is important. I think for a community to be unified behind the schools and understand what we do, right? And I do think that if we didn't have Allerton Hill doing it, somebody else has to do it. So if somebody else is having to do it, then we're having to add a new, you know, line item to somebody's job description. Right? In the advent team. And so then they're doing more work that either they're not getting paid for and so feeling upset about, or we're not getting paid for it. Or we're paying them more money to add another line item to their job description. So it would just move the money somewhere else as opposed to.
Well, I'm basically saying just cut it out, you know?
Yes, I do. I get it. I think it's important to have.
Well, I love co-budgeting when it comes to, you know, comes to spending money on, on things that I just don't think are, are really, you know, are secondary, certainly secondary, you know, the, and, and we get some little response from the, you know, the survey that they sent out to the whole community. I mean, I, I think they're happy if our schools are doing well, you know, and the property values.
I think that I just want, the one thing I would add is that calendar we're utilizing as an update for the community on our financial perspective and our strategic goals with related to finances and also related to achievement and student growth and facilities. So like, we're trying to do two in one. We're doing it for the parents. There's obviously dates and stuff in there for the parents, but we actually utilize that calendar to do a couple of updates for the community on those things that matter to those people. So I would say you're right. Most of our community members want to know what we're spending money on. They want to know if we're staying within our fund balance. They want to know what our facilities look like and whether or not we're making updates to those. And that's why we were trying to do that and put that information in as a strategic plan update to everyone in the community as opposed to doing a separate mailer. So our neighbors in Lake Forest, each of the districts do a yearly like magazine where they do an update on the strategic plan and the finances and all of those things to all the community members. Because we know that not everyone goes to the website or accesses, accesses that information. We do want to tell that positive story that we're being good financial stewards and that we're making positive contributions to the community in terms of that. If we want to do that a different way, that's fine. But I do think it's important to stay in touch with our community that doesn't regularly come here. Number one, because we have potential parents, we have parents that come in before they have students with us, but eventually have kids and like to stay updated. And also we have families that all their, all their children have grown, but they might come back. And we would love to encourage their children to come back and raise their families in Lake Bluff too. So for those reasons, I would say we should do something for that group. And that goes in the mailbox at least once a year, like whether it's a magazine or a calendar or whatever, because I just don't think we can't manage an email listener. They don't, if they don't sign up, we don't know they're there. So the only reliable way to get information for the rest of our community is in the mailbox. So that's number one. As far as Allerton Hill goes, I hear you. I use a chat GPT too. They're not doing the writing for us. We do almost all the writing for them. They're helping us with communication though. And there is a lot to be said for how people engage on social media with students, with school districts, with any kind of story. There's a lot they help us with in terms of recruiting potential staff members. There's a lot that they're doing to help us rethink about what we're putting online in terms of student faces and privacy and how we're telling that story without compromising privacy. They're keeping us in up, like up to date on what other school districts are doing and what we might want to do so that we're responding to parent needs and kind of like what parents are expecting. So what we get for that five thousand dollars a month is a lot more than we would have if we had, say, a communications person. Or if I added it, you know, every, you take this part, you take this part, like we do with HR. We don't have an HR director. We all take a part of it. We also all take a part of communication, but communication is a strategy. Like there, there, it is very helpful to have somebody looking at all the different ways that we communicate with parents and community and students and making sure that we stay consistent and we're getting the information out we need to. So that's just, if we don't want to spend that money, that's fine. I, I just want to give a little bit more context to what they do.
As the stuff adding.
Also the crisis communication, which we never do.
And those contracts are brought to the board for proposals.
Just one.
Well, and we can discuss it next time. It's up for renewal too, for sure.
I just want to say as a public body, I think it's important that we update all of our citizens, even, or just attempt to update them. Even if they throw it in the trash or don't read it. I think we should be sending stuff out even to users, to non-users of the school because their tax dollars and help fund the schools. That's just my take on it.
Yeah, I agree too. Anything else on this? September, we see the second time.
Yeah, the final budget will be September.
So if I get, if I get exercised about something else between now and September, or just thinks some expense ought to be double checked or looked at or challenged, would I contact you?
And we'll have a meeting in August too. We just don't have a meeting in July.
Oh, oh, oh.
We'll talk about the bill pay resolution because with that, we send all the bills out to the board to resume in advance. And then if you have anything you want to talk about, we'll wait until August and we can all have a discussion.
I'll ask more about the budget because if we put something in the budget, then we're expecting to spend it. And, and so I'll, you know, buy into it.
Mad if you're Jay.
Well, it's available to spend, I should say.
You're right. You're right.
I do build it up from great detail, but it isn't always the case.
No, I've seen all, I've seen all the detail. It's tremendous.
And you can.
Remember the many years we did inspire the furniture?
You can, yes, you can.
Jay's always trying to do jobs. Yep.
Next thing, workers' compensation should be quick, very easy. It's pretty much flat brushes.
Sure.
So we're asking for people that policy. The, any questions about what question?
No.
The property casualty also is a very small increase versus last year. There's a lot of detail in memo just about how we cooperatively purchase corporate other districts to manage risk. But though the headline is that we're, we're very well covered and cost. And so we, we asked for approval for this as well, although as a member of the property that I'm.
Get that.
We did, but it's always, we always ask for approval just to acknowledge.
Knowledge of it. Yeah. And do you know when we find out, when the, I know it would go up into twenty, twenty six, twenty seven? When would we get that? Like same time next year?
Yeah.
Okay.
So like we, we find out in May, they do all the annual renewals in May. And so we, and it's based on our experience, so they do a lot of work, like the insurance market is actually pretty crazy right now. And so they, they cooperate, does a lot of work to go out and purchase additional insurance from third parties and then try to manage within our, within the districts. We, we all contribute money to a pool. We try to self-fund a lot of the insurance upfront. And then, and then they cover us at higher levels just in case something catastrophic happens. And so they're always working on new lines of coverage, cybersecurity, things like that. Because we did have a solid bit this year, our, our experience in the school board label made cause us to have some qualification next year. And then I'm sending with the bill pay resolution. So because we don't, do not have a meeting in June, sorry, July, we're in June. The board is giving authorization to pay bills without a meeting. And so the, what's spelled out in the, in the resolution is that we will send a bills list out to the board members and then you can review it. And if you have any, if you want to pull anything off the bills list, we can hold that and not pay it. Absent that, we would go ahead and pay the bills and then be come back in August and review the bills list and approve it, retroactive them.
All you have to do is we email them out to you and if you have any questions, just.
Yeah, if you have questions. And our work policy allows us to do this.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Want to talk about the first food service?
Sure. So food service. I would say, so we, we had a new food service program this year. We used Quest last year, which had a, was kind of a food service management company. They prepared the food at Lake Forest School District, put it into warmers and drive it over to Lake Bluff. This year we switched to more of, we switched back to kind of how we used to run the, of the middle school program where we take orders in the morning and bring in food from local restaurants. And then the, the LVES lunch program was sort of similar to the kiddos program that we had a number of years ago where parents would order online. It was kind of a catering model where parents would order and then the restaurants would do it. So I'll just kind of take them separately. The LVES lunch program was very mixed. We had a lot of people, only thirty four percent of people were satisfied. But we had a lot of people who were passionate about it and so we had quite a few responses. We had almost a hundred and eighty responses. And you, and there, people liked it and disliked it for the same reasons. So having hot lunch was perceived as convenient. People could just order lunch and have it show up, which was convenient. But then ordering in advance was inconvenient and people didn't want to have to order in advance. They wanted their initial, their get lunch at school. I would, I would say that the current people who are at elementary school did not experience kiddos. So this is kind of new to them and they're coming off of the lunch program where they could just show up and order my lunch. People also, in terms of the food, really raved about it. Hey, my kids are fine eating the food. It's great. Local restaurants and other people thought that really disliked it, they perceived as unhealthy and. They perceived as unhealthy and are horrified they were feeding fast food to children. So both things going. The LDS lunch program, the majority of the students are satisfied with the program. And then parents were not unsatisfied with the program. They appreciate the convenience and so were pretty happy with it.
And Jay, before we switched from kiddos, that was similar feedback that you were getting about the program at elementary before, right? You were getting that same kind of like, it's unhealthy.
Well, before we switched, that was the fear and that was what the comments, once we, we did some surveys after people experienced the program and I think kiddos had it more, made more of an effort to make sure the restaurants were cooking from scratch and maybe having more healthy options or just advertising it more and promoting it more. We got, as, as the program was, after a couple of years in the program, we had about two thirds of people in both middle school and elementary school satisfied. So there's also now that's favorable right now, but we only had a year. The common themes are people want more variety and they want healthier options. People always ask for healthier options and then they, then the kids throw away and then they, or people in the lunchroom are like, hey, your kids are throwing away all the food. This is terrible. So it's kind of hard to win. Out of 170 responses, 34% of the people were satisfied or very satisfied. These are parents. Forty-three were, were dissatisfied and 23% were kind of little. They said convenience of the people that were satisfied, convenience and choices available were some of the drivers and people were okay with price and quality. Of the people who were dissatisfied, again, convenience was the key driver. So that was both kind of hard to win. And then people price, food quality and healthiness was not as, as big of a dissatisfying. Of the positive comments, many people mentioned the variety of options, that children liked to eat the food and that it was convenient. They appreciate their support for local businesses. The negative comments centered mostly around fast food, food quality and healthiness. And then the ordering process, the website was a little bit clunky and people trouble with it. They didn't like that if they didn't, if their child was absent, that they couldn't cancel that day. And then some people felt that it was expensive. For our middle school, we had about, this is the parents, we only had 65 respondents, but that's still pretty good for the middle school. Forty percent were satisfied with the program. Only 20% were dissatisfied. Of the people who were satisfied, again, convenience and food quality, convenience was the biggest driver. People who were dissatisfied, the choices available. So I think that we kind of kept the menu pretty static this year and it kind of will stale on both the parents and the kids were looking for some other options. Positive comments, variety of food, ease of ordering. And then negative, just we want more, more variety and diverse restaurants and things. The student feedback was probably the most important at the middle school. Kids loved it. They were 55% were satisfied or very satisfied. Only 60% were dissatisfied with about a third, kind of indifferent. Food quality, the food was the biggest driver of the people who were satisfied and the convenience. And then the children, people who were unsatisfied, it was where the choices available and the food quality. So of the positive comments, people loved cookies, as you can imagine. Good taste and, and fresh and variety of options. And they also liked the lunch stuff. And then negative comments, you know, they just, I think, again, menu got a little bit old. There was a, repeated the same every week. And so they wanted some, some refreshed options and repetition. Financials, this was kind of a late add to the packet. You can see last year, we spent about $185,000 on food service net, about the same at each building. So Quest was very expensive. It was very labor intensive and equipment intensive and just a lot of transporting food around. The program actually did not perform quite as well as I was hoping this year, but it's still a significant improvement where elementary school is about $60,000 spent on food service and $31,000 at the middle school for total of ninety. So we saved $100,000 in food service this year. The reason that shows a loss is just that we're, this includes meals that we're providing to free students who don't pay for lunch, which means it costs, it's absorbed by the So the next steps are to, you know, this feedback has already been shared with our vendors and our staff and we're looking to make some adjustments next year.
Forgive me for not knowing the answer to this, but the vendor we're using this year is a similar model to kiddos, but it is not kiddos. Is that correct? And are the same meals provided at the middle school that are provided at the elementary school? They're different. Are they different restaurants or just different options?
Different restaurants. Some, some of the same restaurants, but it's not like if we're having Luke's at the elementary school, we have it in the school. So it's different by day.
Gotcha.
Actually, at the elementary school, we use a lot of, we had salads every day and we use a lot of the same restaurants. We are adding, they are going to be adding some new restaurants next year to both schools.
And just as a reminder too, this was our lowest rated item on the parent survey the previous year. So the reason we made the adjustment was because parents were very unhappy with food and so were kids. And so we made the adjustment and decided to go back to that program and try to make it a little bit better. So. So this works out of big cost savings.
Yeah. I mean, I think financially, and I think probably if we would have done a survey in the past, it would be better.
Thank you.
The last thing is just the fee waiver policy. I did not prepare anything for this. Currently, we have a separate fee waiver application from our free lunch application. And it is just additional administrative burden for the office staff. And there's not a difference between the lists of who has a fee waiver and who has food lunch or not, but different criteria are the same. And so we're proposing merging. There's also some confusion. People apply for a fee waiver thinking they're at lunch and then they don't because they didn't fill out the application. So we're recommending streamlining that and just using the free lunch application for everything next year. People would follow up on application and it would apply to these as well as lunch.
That seems like a great idea. Yeah, it's not just administrative burden. It's burden of accounts. Yeah. And understanding of what they're getting. See, and it's reductive.
There's, there's some.
But we were not going to vote on this tonight. We wanted to see if there was any other discussion. Or would we even be voting? What is the, there's no cost associated. So is it suggesting our?
It's just suggesting our procedures.
So anyone have any questions on that? Really quickly, there's summer book club. We have 130 people selling friends and you'll get an email every Friday. And that's all I have to say. No, it's 1:30. Oh, you are. The door. So not in front of us. Yeah, it just started. We're getting great, we're getting, I'm getting great feedback and I'm super excited that we have community members again from Lake Forest and other communities and lots of participation. So we've provided books to the community members if they need to check them out.
Tell us what the book is.
The Gift of Failure. She is Jessica Leguiz, was a middle school teacher. It is pre-COVID, but it's a, it's a good read. It's very relevant. As a parent, I relate to a lot of it. And it's just, it's nice to listen to. I feel like audiobooks too. She has a nice voice. That might be the.
Feedback.
Yes. So yeah, I had three sign up this week, so up to 130.
Fantastic. I would just like to note that I think it's fabulous that you have started doing this second year here now and it's wonderful for the community and leads to great discussion and.
Well, and last year's book club, to be fair, that interest generation likes a lot of changes in our own district and in surrounding districts. And so I don't know what will come of this one, but we will have in-person discussions again in August and I hope that people will come up for it. They part, we partner with the library on those and it's a fun place to meet and go check out a book library. Okay. And then really quickly, I'm going to go through this quick. We did have a public hearing on this, but we need to do it in the regular session as well. So just as a reminder, we have not approved the withdrawal of two of the 18 districts for True North. However, at this point, given the information that we now have all 18 districts are intending to withdraw before June 30th, 30th of this year, we are part of that group. And we're part of that group, not because we don't value True North or not because we don't need a cooperative, but because we need to protect our interests and the potential dissolution or reorganization of True North Cooperative A04. So we're putting in our intent to withdraw tonight if the board passes that resolution. And that will put all of the 18 districts, assuming that everyone follows through with everything they say they're going to do, on the same path and in equal footing as of July 1st. And then we will continue to work in small groups at different levels, small groups of superintendents, small groups of directors of special education. I know our finance people will be working on it and we're going to figure out a path forward. But hopefully we can stay on a two-year off ramp or ramp to whatever change we're going to make and make the best solution that we possibly can. Services should stay intact at True North for next year. So that is what I want to make everyone, everyone understands that 25, 26 is already staffed. The budget's already been passed. We are up and running at True North for next year. The year after that, I don't know yet. But really clearly, I want to say that we've been grateful for the partnership of True North. We've been a founding member since whenever it started. They have helped us tremendously support the students with some of the most significant needs in our community. We couldn't do it without them. We're going to need something and so we're invested in whatever the next step is. So this is just a next step for us. We can pull back on with this withdrawal if we need to, if we come to a good solution. But later in the action items, I will be asking you to approve a resolution of an intent to withdraw as well as the ability for the administrative team to engage with a law firm that is engaging 15 of the 18 districts to work on this process together. Any questions on that?
Just several questions. Will all the district will be voting on this like we have for the previous two districts? Whether to allow them. Still.
That's a great question. We did have a discussion about that. I don't know if you want to talk.
I guess if some, I assume would ours go to the other districts potentially?
It could. And it would, following the bylaws at this point, but most districts are sending out their paperwork saying, if you vote on it, fine. If you don't vote on it, we're considering it a yes. Considering that we've only received paperwork from, I think, three or four additional districts, we will get paperwork from other districts after this board meeting and we don't mean to like, or honestly.
So honest.
Just kidding. This is a long meeting. We don't do anything. I, so I just don't know that that's necessary. But yeah, well, and that's, you know, previously when we had voted on these, our position was different. We were intending to stay within the cooperative and didn't want the other districts to do it as well because we didn't want to take on that financial responsibility. Now our position has changed due to the fact that everyone's intending to withdraw. And so I no longer think it's necessary for us to vote on these things. And it seems inconsistent for us to be in our own intent to withdraw there, but still vote no, which we would, I believe, have to vote because of the financial implications with voting yes.
Yeah. No, that makes sense.
Yeah, but it's a great question.
Yeah. And I have no disagreement with that.
Thanks for asking it. And we did have a, you know, hearing on that earlier today. If anybody can go back and watch the more lengthy discussion that we had on it, but we do understand that this is, you know, a concern issue for our families that use True North and we are sensitive to that and will work to come up with the best solution that we can along with the other districts. We're grateful for our partners.
Okay. Item next is the CKLA third grade ELA pilot.
Okay. So I'm going to give a little background and take us back just a few steps before I propose what we're thinking of doing for next year. Just sort of the current framework and resources that we have in terms of literacy, especially at the elementary, our next steps, our future planning, and then how we'll evaluate our decisions. Do want to thank all the board members that sent questions on this. I'm trying to address a lot of it within the presentation, but feel free to stop me if there's things that you're wondering about. So just as a reminder, we've spent last year, last couple of years, but last year really intensely working on our guaranteed viable transparent curriculum that is based, that are, is based on grade level standards and will be available for parents and community in the fall of 2025. That's for all grades in ELA. When we look at early literacy, I just want to highlight some of the extra things that we've done in case my kids decide to, yeah, it's time for me to sleep. So in early literacy, we've really invested a lot in professional development. Letters training is sort of the gold standard in science of reading that addresses all of the areas of all the strands in science of reading, phonological awareness, phonics, fluency vocabulary, comprehension and written language. It's not necessarily tied to any textbook or program, but really is kind of a foundational experience and learning experience for teachers who were not prepared at the university level with the science of reading, research and concept. So we've been investing in that. It's really an intense training. It's actually worth graduate credit. It spans an entire year and we're sending another cohort next year. We'll continue with Hagrid, which is, we've been using for a very long time for phonemic awareness and we've had great success with. We'll continue again with Ames web assessments and Grace K and one. And we'll be making a lot of decisions based on, on those assessments. And then we'll continue in early literacy to research, updated research or resources based on the student data that we're getting, especially in the second year and beyond. When we look at intermediate literacy, we're doing the same work with guaranteed viable transparent curriculum, but we've also added some other things. So take flight professional development, we've had our interventionists trained in at intermediate and at middle. That's an intervention for students with dyslexia. That's not something that we've had prior to the last couple of years. We've also introduced at fourth through eighth grade explicit grammar instruction. And then what we're talking about tonight is piloting Amplify CKLA as a new ELA resource and specifically in third grade. So why third grade? So we will have a new team of teachers who did not engage in working on the guaranteed viable transparent curriculum last year. So the intense amount of work was happening during the release time this year with Jackie. And we will have a new team of teachers that will be teaching third grade based on various reasons. So those teachers we want to support. Third grade is also an ideal grade to see a program, any program in action with regard to both early literacy skill reinforcement and content rich knowledge building. So in other words, when a third grade teacher is teaching literacy, they're moving students from learning how to read to reading to learn. And so they're really focusing on solidifying those foundational skills. We'll see how the program addresses those things. And then we'll also see them move into that knowledge building through text that kids would do later in the program in, say, grades four and five. And then of course, we know third grade is a pivotal year. We need to solidify foundational skills and we want to make sure we're supporting kids and teachers through that process. Why did we choose Amplify? So we did look at three different resources for standards alignment, updates that reflect the most current research on structured literacy and a support for the writing expectations that we have for our students. Specifically, we looked into the Reading League Curriculum Evaluation Report on Amplify, which evaluates resources in terms of their alignment to the science of reading. So that's a nonprofit organization that's been focused on looking at curriculum resources through the lens of science of reading research. And Amplify meets or mostly meets the criteria for red flag practices, like some of the things that have been highlighted recently with the units of study, like the miscue or the three queuing system or picture walks or those kinds of things. This program meets or mostly meets that red flag component in that it does not utilize those strategies, if that makes sense. This particular version of Amplify is its third edition, which is releasing in the fall of 25. This is one that we will be releasing. The second edition was first released in 2017 and it had minimal updates in 2022. So when we began. So when we began looking at this even a year ago, they had not updated their product or their program with any substantial updates since 2017. In 2017, that was our first implementation year of units of study. I know that that program, that second edition does not reflect the most current uh, concerns about balanced literacy and addressing all of the issues that we want to address in terms of structured literacy. So I feel really confident that this third edition is going to get to that, especially some of the weaknesses that other districts have expressed to us on that second edition with, in terms of writing. Um, we've talked to other districts that have implemented this program and it does not, well, second edition at least, does not really have a robust writing component. Um, and we have heard from our high school that our students are excellent writers. Um, we know that and we want to keep that standard high. And so wanted to have a program that was going to support that. The Reading League also identified in this edition, some other weaknesses would be lacking in fluency practice and some assessments on foundational skills, which we could uh, implement ourselves and supplement with. But there aren't that many weaknesses. Uh, the other programs we looked at either were not really updated or don't really reflect the changes we want to see in um, literacy instruction. I know some of you asked about technology. Obviously we're trying to pull back on some tech usage within literacy. We don't, I don't really have a good answer for you right now because we're going to meet with the team and talk about what digital components are actually essential for implementing the program well. From what we looked at now, it's primarily in the assessment um, and extra practice areas of the liter, of the program. And I don't know to what degree we would be using those, those pieces. So our next step uh, would be to begin professional development for our third grade team. Uh, the members of the team that will be with us on that third grade team next year or within from other grades have already looked at this resource. They've looked at actually two of the three resources. Um, and then when our new teachers come at the end of July, we'll be working with them as well. And then the entire team will engage with the materials and be prepared for the first week of, weeks of school prior to students writing. Um, we will work with Amplify, but other, also we've made connections with districts in the area that have used it and implemented it and are willing to articulate with us about the best ways to implement the program. Um, and so we are connected with them as well. But just the biggest part of this for me is that we've already created an infrastructure for success for our teacher teams in implementing any resource because they have 90 minutes of facilitated professional development every week. This is about 22 hours more professional development than we've ever had in this district or any other district that I have been aware of. And it's not like a day here and a day there. It's like job embedded professional development planning so that these teachers can sit and plan together, look through the materials, prepare themselves to materials well in advance, but not too far in advance that they forget. And then they can assess the program as they're used again. So I really feel really good about the structure we've put in place before implementing something like this. Planning for the future. So obviously third grade uh, we're going to start with, but our goal is to make a decision on whether or not we want to expand these materials to other grades by January of 26. We're going to continue throughout the fall to look at our needs in terms of data as we make this decision. At, in either case, in the fourth and fifth grade for sure, we're going to want to supplement this program with more choice and novel-based studies and units um, based on novels like we have been preparing our kids because our ninth grade data has been consistently good in, in English Language Arts. And we do not want to give up the good parts of our program. So no matter what we choose about fourth and fifth grade, we're going to be probably supplementing with some of those other authentic units. Um, and I'm not sure what pre-K two looks like because those are different skills. And quite frankly, when I look at the Amplify Reading League, there's more um, weaknesses in the area of foundational skills in this program than there are at intermediate grades. So I'm not sure yet for that, but we'll keep talking about it and keep looking at it with our teams. Um, especially as they work through their data and their guaranteed Bible curriculum that they've written and will be implementing next year. If we decided to go full implementation for this particular program in K5, the additional cost after this year would be $62,000 in the first year because we would already be purchasing third grade. They don't let you do pilots anymore. So when I first started doing this, you could um, buy like discounted materials or buy it for a certain length of time and then you didn't have to commit to the whole program. That's not the way this works. We buy the year's worth of materials and then we keep them if we want to move forward and repurchase consumables. Um, so we wouldn't have to just fully outfit the other grades. Even moving from the second edition to the third edition, they're making you repurchase the entire program. So um, I don't know what that's about, but I can tell you printed materials are at a premium. They have been for a long time. Most districts operate on a digital platform because it's cheaper. So you're going to pay for print materials. Um, this one in particular comes with a reader for the students that they'll all have in their hand for every unit and then also a consumable. So if we were to continue with this and then uh, that would be the 62,000 in the first year would be the entire thing. But then for third grade next year, there would also be 3,000 in consumable costs. And then every year following that consumables, that's like the work, work looks. Right? Um, currently we don't have plans to implement a program like this in sixth to eighth grade. Uh, our sixth to eighth grade literacy uh, units of instruction are very strong. Our kids go into the high school very well-prepared. Our teachers are excellent, not that our teachers at elementary aren't. Um, but the units that they've been doing and working on for quite some time, which is why we'd like to infiltrate some of those units down to fourth and fifth and keep that level of instruction really high and engagement really high for kids. Um, and then the other thing that's on the deck is it doesn't have to do with literacy is that Illinois is going to be writing a new numeracy, numeracy plan for math. And so we're going to have to be paying attention to that in the next couple of years and what we need to do in terms of shifts to our programs and materials um, for math as well. So just keeping that on the radar. How will we know if this is the good decision? Um, student achievement and growth is the ultimate goal, but there is not a program out there that's going to guarantee a hundred percent student achievement and growth. It's just not there. So we will watch it and we'll monitor it. We'll look at our progress monitoring and our data. But in six months, even a year, even a year and a half, I, I would not be able to attribute results negative or positive to one program. Um, there's lots of variables that go into student achievement and growth. So really what we're going to be looking at with our teachers is, is this resource aligned to standards? And is it helping us instruct um, with research-based instructional strategies on science of reading? Are the resources for teachers good at supporting multilingual learners? Um, enhancing expressive language for all students, which is the writing and the speaking components of literacy, which is an area that we know that we would like to improve on. And then obviously relevance and engaging materials for, for students. So we're going to be checking in. Is this something that kids are interested in? Do they like, do they like it? Um, are they engaging with it? Because we know if they're engaging at high levels, they're one step ahead in terms of learning. And I do just want to remind folks, so this is um, early. We don't typically do achievement um, or data reveals until we have it all packaged up with IAR and MAP. But just looking at our achievement from this year, um, spring map in the ELA. So this is again, not our final measure because it doesn't include the standardized assessment, state standardized assessment. Um, we had on the left-hand column, the percent of students who met their growth targets in each grade. Um, and then the percent that achieved above the 25th percentile. 25th percentile doesn't seem like a great measure, but it actually 25th to the seventh and above the 25th percentile is either average or above average. And that would indicate whether or not our program is successful. If you have 80% of your students achieving in the average range, then you have a successful program. It doesn't mean that all of them are at the 25th percentile. In fact, many of them are well above that. Um, but that's a good bell curve because we can intervene on those students who are below the 25th percentile reasonably. So we're looking at this resource to enhance and to support what our teachers are doing. We have the infrastructure to help them through the implementation and really make use of their resources in a good way. Um, but we're building off of a solid foundation and I feel good about that. So I'm asking for the board's support for that. As a reminder, um, last year's data, again, 85% of our students in third, third, eighth grade met growth and/or achievement goals on IAR and NEVA when we looked at them together. And then that freshman data that we continue to look at every year is really strong. We just had um, breakfast with Dr. Linnert. She continues to tell us that she's, you know, always proud of all of her students. Um, but Lake Bluff kids come in strong with problem solving and critical thinking and attacking um, new and different situations. And um, she could really speak uh, about our kids in ways that made us really proud. So not that she's not speaking that way about Lake Bluff, but I'm just saying what she said about our kids. Any questions?
Thank you.
Hi, Ron. And sorry if it's not an answer you can give because it's new, but they made an update from 2017 to 2022. Then this is the next update. Do they know when their like fourth edition will come out? Because what if it's next year and then it would be?
I doubt it.
So we wouldn't incur more costs because of it.
I doubt they would do that, but, but you never know. Yeah, I would say we stick with this edition for a little while. Like, oh, no, two are in the second edition right now and not looking to rebuy.
You don't have to.
You don't have to. The one thing that you would, that you have to be careful with is like print resources is though like.
They didn't.
It's the consumables. Like if they stop printing the consumable materials, then my question.
That makes sense. Um, can you explain again? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, for example, neighboring districts we know who use this program have been using the second edition for years, even though it hasn't really been updated since 2017.
Okay, that makes sense. And then can you just explain like the difference in your language of what a resource versus a program is?
Yeah. So the program is, this type of a thing would be a program and we use it as a resource to that curriculum. The curriculum is the whole, the whole standards, assessment, instruction, intervention kind of system that we have for tiers one, two and three. So curriculum is all of that. And we want at least 80% of our kids to be successful in that, in that instructional framework in their classroom. Um, with tier two interventions maybe given by the teacher. We would only be looking at like 15 to 20% of our kids needing a piece of work outside of that. So good tier one curriculum, incorporate whatever we do for all the kids in the classroom without extra support, would get us to like 80%. Because if you're beyond, if you need to intervene on more than 20% of the kids on a regular basis, then there's something wrong with what's happening in the classroom. That makes sense.
Yes. You mentioned that there are other districts in the area that use this. Is that something that we'll have like partnership with to be able to kind of bounce ideas off of or send teachers to go watch or?
Yep.
I know you've done that in the past.
So Jackie has been working with curriculum directors in two districts that are close by to us. Um, we've had lunch with one today um, to talk more about just like how that first year of implementation went and any suggestions that they would have for us. And really what they talked about was that job embedded teacher support. They did it with release time, you know, like subs and, you know, days throughout the year. Um, I feel like we have an even stronger system um, with what we built with kids, where just anticipating and be able to have that team time dedicated every week without worrying about planning for subs for their kids. Um, I feel like that we have that covered, but the other good piece is like, we'll all kind of be working together now in terms of what we're doing with writing and um, supplementing where it needs to be with each of those, with each of those grades. I'm just trying to say.
I'd like just to congratulate you. And I think um, I want appreciation for you willing to be flexible and try this out. You know, uh, found like a good plan to, to start and see. You've got a good plan for getting the teachers up to speed and introducing them. I mean, I think this is just fantastic that you're willing to introduce it and did so very quickly.
Yeah, I mean, I think um, we'll be talking about the grade level soon after the school year starts about kind of where they're feeling like they need extra support with resources and starting to talk about the implementation in third, up and down, how that's going and.
No, but we've, we've, we've moved a long way from February or March.
Yeah.
In our thinking and looking at this. Congratulations.
That's the team's work. Jackie is, Jackie's not here tonight. She would be presenting this uh, because she's done all the work, so.
Well, she'll be in the meetings.
She'll be in the meetings.
With the teachers who are the, getting to talk about this and collaborate on this and lesson playing with it, correct?
Yes. And the other thing I want to bring in is that Tracy also uh, did a lot of work to evaluate the resources too because what we want is to have good tight collaboration between student services and um, our general education teachers because if the student services teachers don't have a clear idea of what they're intervening and supporting kids with who have IDs or programs, then that's not a cool piece of situation either. So we wanted them to weigh in also. Tracy was in, Joe to win on whether or not they felt like this was sustainable. And obviously our principals and it's been a team member.
So sorry, we're voting on the cost.
Yes. We, it doesn't, we don't, it doesn't need the threshold. 35,000 is the threshold, but um, this is a big decision and obviously could lead to more investments. So we just, we both felt pretty strongly that you should weigh in.
But it's actually not board policy and you don't have to.
No, I think so. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to our action items. We're knocking these out, we're in.
We're knocking them out.
The first one up is the tentative budget approval. May I have a motion to approve the tentative budget as just presented by Jay? So moved.
Second.
Lauren, could you call vote, please?
Sure. Laura Breakstone.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Andrew Carlson.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch. Tim Penich.
Yes.
Any further discussion or questions on this? Motion passes. Next up is third grade ELACKLA pilot approval. May I have motion to approve the third grade ELACKLA pilot as just presented by Dr. Lee Allen?
So moved.
Any further discussion or questions? Lauren, could you call vote, please?
Tim Penich.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch. Yes. Andrew Carlson.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Laura Breakstone.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up, workers' compensation approval. May I have a motion to approve the workers' compensation as just presented?
So moved. Second.
Any further comments or questions? Lauren, could you call vote, please?
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Richard Driver.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Andrew Carlson. Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Tim Penich.
Yes.
Laura Breakstone.
Yes.
That motion passes. Property casualty insurance approval. May I have a motion to approve the property casualty insurance as just presented?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Lauren, call vote, please.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Laura Breakstone.
Yes.
Tim Penich.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Andrew Carlson. Richard Driver.
Yes.
We have to have. Bill pay resolution approval. May I have a motion to approve the bill pay resolutions as just presented?
So moved. Second.
Lauren, could you call vote?
Yes. Anne Hill.
Yes.
Laura Breakstone.
Yes.
Tim Penich.
Yes.
Andrew Carlson.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch.
That motion passes. Approval of D65 to withdraw from True North. May I have a motion to approve the withdrawal of the D65, of D65 from True North valid as presented this evening? So moved. Second. Anyone have anything else to say on this? Lauren, could you call vote, please? Do you want to say something?
No.
Oh.
I'm sorry, do you?
No.
Laura Breakstone.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Andrew Carlson.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Tim Penich.
Yes.
That uh, passes. Am I saying this name?
Yes, Franz.
Okay. True North Attorney Intent Approval. May I have a motion to approve Franzik as counsel for this matter to execute any documents needed to confirm this engagement and for Franzik to direct the administrative team as discussed in closed session.
So moved. Sure.
Thank you. Uh, Lauren, could you call vote, please?
Tim Penich.
Yes.
Laura Breakstone.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Andrew Carlson.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch.[1778.73]
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay, this, next up is the approval for personnel report.
No.
Approval of destruction, just, oh my god, destruction of closed session audio recordings. August one, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. May I have a motion to approve that?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, Lauren, could you call vote, please?
Andrew Carlson.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Laura Breakstone.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Tim Pennage.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Okay. Next up is the approval of the personnel report. I am gonna read the entirety of the personnel report as required for me to do so. And then Kelly, I'd love to invite you up to chat about it.
Thank you.
All right. So first up, non-licensed new hire. Joanna Moss Carter, paraprofessional at LVES, effective eight twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, replacing Skylar Cook. Salary of twenty dollars per hour. Andrew Paxton, paraprofessional at LVMS, effective eight twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, replacing Darlene Mandell at twenty dollars per hour. Re-resignations. First up, Sarah Williams, health teacher, LVMS, effective June third, twenty twenty-five. Next, Timothy Burks, psychologist at LVES, effective June third, twenty twenty-five. Third, Kathleen Sheffer, third grade teacher at LVES, effective six eleven, twenty twenty-five. One termination, Skylar Cook, paraprofessional, LVES, effective six three, twenty twenty-five. We have a series of licensed new hires. First is Timothy Burks as a summer evaluator, LVES, effective six eleven, twenty twenty-five, not replacing anyone. Salary of thirty-three, twenty-five per hour. This is an extra duty rate. Caitlin Rukert, a fourth grade teacher, LVES, effective eight twenty, twenty twenty-five, replacing Frances Zale. Fifty-two thousand dollar salary scheduled at BA one. Allison Craig, fourth grade teacher, LVES, effective eight twenty, twenty twenty-five, replacing Rachel Park. Fifty-two thousand dollar annual salary rate, schedule BA one. Rebecca Shagas, third grade teacher, LVES, effective eight twenty, twenty twenty-five, replacing Kathy Kuschenpor. At sixty thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars, schedule MA three. Olivia Kaminsky, kindergarten teacher at LVES, effective eight twenty, twenty twenty-five, replacing Denise Salad.
I think that replacing Amanda.
Thank you.
Well, Richard.
Uh, Woodman.
Not considered.
Richard.
I think it's a little confusing.
One of our kindergarteners. Replacing a kindergarten teacher. For fifty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars, schedule of BA four. Olivia Caposella, fourth grade teacher, LVES, effective eight twenty, twenty twenty-five.
It's a movement.
Replacing Riley Werthen for sixty thousand two eighty-two, scheduled BA six. Erin Mulaney, third grade teacher at LVES, effective eight twenty, twenty twenty-five, replacing Catherine Sheffer for fifty-two thousand dollars, scheduled BA one. Tara Caldwell, health and wellness teacher at LVMS, effective eight twenty, twenty twenty-five, replacing Sarah Williams. Salary of fifty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-four, schedule BA four. Amanda Suarez, student support specialist slash OBS two. District wide, effective eight twenty, twenty twenty-five, replacing Amanda Long. Annual salary sixty thousand two hundred and eighty-two at the schedule of BA six. We have one FMLA, which is Hillary Moore, social studies teacher at LVMS, effective October fifteen, twenty twenty-five through June five, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, so Kelly's here to just provide a little bit of background on kind of this team and staffing process that we have at elementary. Um, my question was, um, in building teams with a lot of new teachers, what kind of balance do you try to strike between experienced teachers who know the district with incoming teachers? And how do you go about putting those teams together?
Okay, um, which, I'm happy to answer and I feel like as Lisa and I talk through this, I wanna give a high-level overview. Um, I also realize it's getting late, but um I do think that it is worth sort of talking about the process in its entirety. And so I take my notes because I function best that way and it's past my bedtime. So I'm gonna do a lot of reading. Um, hopefully this answers your question. Um, but I do wanna start by acknowledging that the teaching assignment and staffing process is an extremely thoughtful and involved one. Um, to my knowledge, the process hasn't really changed in my time in this role. Um, and a lot of it has stayed pretty consistent. Um, it has been and continues to be challenging and emotional. Um, I think part of this is because as elementary educators, um, we, I would include myself in that at times, um, are, they're passionate and dedicated individuals. So this process really begins in January um, as we start to consider proposing numbers and sections to the board. So the, your question relates to hiring new staff, but it really begins with kind of that overall teacher assignment and staffing plan. Um, so due to the size of LVES, we do experience fluctuation from grades eight through five to either four sections or five sections per grade level. So in January, we're, I'm starting already to consider what movement may need to occur based on staffing and sections. Um, we're also wrapping up teacher evaluation and there are decisions regarding resignation that can be occurring at that time that also feed into staffing and assignments. Um, in February, I sent a form to existing staff asking if they have any interest in changing grade levels that I can better understand their interests and begin to invite conversations. Um, additionally, other positions may be opening up. For example, this year we had staff moving into reading specialist positions or considering movement to a specialist class. Um, throughout February and then in the beginning of March, there are a lot of conversations at the administrative level then at the teacher and admin level. Um, it's really always ideal if the teacher is interested in moving. Um, but we know if they're not, then more conversations occur. And so there's a lot of back and forth. Um, at this time, I'm taking things into consideration. Um, things that include the survey results and teacher interest, years of experience, years taught at a specific grade level, certifications and talents, team dynamic and need. So there is a lot of back and forth and then a lot more back and forth and then more changes that can occur and additional back and forth. Um, I think it's also worth mentioning then when one change is made, that it can result then in the possibility of additional changes and movements. We're also dealing with personnel, privacy, um, and things that have to be sort of kept behind the scenes and then other things can be shared more publicly. Uh, so it's always my goal to initially have staff assignments out prior to spring break. Then we get into sort of hiring and posting for vacancies. So the process has evolved a little bit in my time in this role, really to make it a more rigorous one, to make sure that we're bringing in the most highly qualified and excellent teachers. Uh, so job posted screening begins. Should I keep going into this?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I screen candidates and then Mrs. TK may join me when possible and available. Following the screening, I bring candidates forward to a team interview round. That round consists of a team of staff, asking candidates a variety of questions, imposing scenarios. The candidate then will visit an office where they're asked to complete a performance task. So we've had a variety of performance tasks. Um, they may include reviewing a data set and developing a plan, responding to a parent email, drafting some form of communication, et cetera. So a little bit is sort of writing and style, but then also how they process information, what they might know as next steps, who they might consult. Um, it's been really powerful and helpful to sort of then get into um that next round. So following the team interviews, um, candidates would move forward to a round where they're invited to teach to a class or group of students. This allows us to really see them in action um and uh how they interact with students and staff. After the interview process is complete, then I consider who might be a fit at each grade level. So again, I'm considering experience, their experience at specific grade levels, any talents or certifications that exist, their own maybe interest in um specific grade levels or vacancies. Um, and then additionally, the number of vacancies per grade level as we wanna continue to ensure the balance on teams. Uh, then I check references and determine making offers. Um, the decision-making conversations, hiring and assigning roles spans across about six months' time. Uh, the last point I do wanna share is that staffing and teaching assignments can and usually is tricky to navigate. I do my best to make the best decisions for students, families, teams and staff. Um, it can be very emotional for everyone involved. I think staff are already calculating how many sections, who's gonna move, who might that be, should it be me? Um, and so um, I again do my best to navigate it. I do take it extremely seriously and I communicate that to staff and teams often and repeatedly. Um, I also know that things can change from not only January to June, but then possibly again from June to August. So all of that is really just important to keep in perspective. Uh, we are dealing with humans and people. Um, and so the goal really continues to remain retention of excellent staff and finding the best fit from outside of the district.
Thank you.
I know that was a lot. Hopefully that's
That's really awesome. It's really interesting and, you know, helpful to hear how well thought out the process is. Two things I'm hearing, tell me if I'm right or wrong, are that um when possible, we, meaning you, like to um place teachers where they want to be teaching because happy teachers was a good thing for the school, yeah. And that balance is one of the things that you seek to work on in a grade level. So you have a grade level where there's a lot of movement, you're gonna put some experienced teachers in that grade level along with teachers. Get on that balance.
Yeah.
Yes. Anybody else have any questions?
Very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie.
May I have a motion, Dr. Trudin?
Did we already do that?
You don't.
We already have to.
Are we have to?
Yes, yes. And I have a motion to approve the personnel report for Jan. twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Lauren, could you call vote?
I got a, I got a question.
Yes.
Um, so um, I thought we were on the, for the music.
We're replacing staff member for staff member. It's not necessarily that person's going into the role. We're just trying to make sure we're like
Keeping it for another time either way.
No, it's fine, but we're not eliminating or we're, or we're reducing headcount for the music program?
No, no, there's, we had a classroom teacher move into that.
Okay.
So we don't usually put transfers on the personnel report. So we're just trying to do that new hire for exiting in place.
Okay.
Good question. It's important to have music too. Lauren, could you call a vote, please?
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Tim Pennage.
Yes.
Anne Hill.
Yes.
Laura Breakstone.
Yes.
Andrew Carlson.
Yes.
Is that everybody? That motion passes. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the following: open session meeting minutes from May twenty, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting minutes. May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, policy committee meeting minutes. The treasurer's report, the impress report, the bills reports, the key card report. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda for June twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, as presented by administration.
So moved.
Session.
Is there any discussion on this? Would anyone like to pull anything out of the consent agenda for a separate vote? Lauren, could you call vote?
Tim Pennage.
Yes.
Andrew Carlson.
Yes.
Laura Breakstone.
Yes.
Richard Driver.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch, yes. Anne Hill.
Yes. That motion passes. Way of request. We had five this month. They're in the packet if you'd like to. Okay. Back to public comments. It's been three hours, but we're here. Does anybody have any public comments that they would like to come up and give? I'm not seeing any. Then I will move for adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn the June twenty-four, twenty twenty-five regular Board of Education meeting at nine fifty-three PM.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.